I'm calling the September ninth, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Board of Education to order per Government Code Section 54950-SEQUITOR and Education Code Section 35140-SEQUITOR at the District Educational Center, 1301 East Orangeville Avenue in Placentia at 5:05 PM. Comments at this time are limited to items in the closed session agenda only. And then we will adjourn to closed session for the purpose of discussing the following matters. 3.1 Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Suspension Release Leave Assignment Non-Relection Non-Reappointment Resignation reinstatement pursuant to Government Code 54957. 3.2 Personnel Matters Public Employee Appointments Employment pursuant to Government Code 54957. Superintendent and Interim Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. 3.3 Conference with Labor Negotiator Unrepresented Employee Local Agency Negotiator is Debbie French from the COSCA Group. 3.4 Conference with Labor Negotiator Unrepresented Employee Local Agency Negotiator Dr. Alan Musarino Interim Superintendent. 3.5 Conference with Labor Negotiations and Labor Negotiators. Dr. Alan Musarino Acting Superintendent Joan Velasco Interim Assistant Superintendent Administrative Services Yolanda Mendoza Acting Assistant Superintendent Human Resources Regarding CSEA A P L E and P L U M. 3.6 Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation Significant Exposure to Litigation pursuant to Paragraph Two or Three of Subdivision D of Section 54956.91 Case General Liability Claim 648854. And 3.7 Claim General Liability Claim 659929. And we have one person wishing to speak and speakers will have three minutes.
Yes, Mrs. Brodowski, please approach the podium.
What a pleasure. I get to speak slowly this time because I planned for two minutes. So I may repeat it just in case you missed something. Okay. I want to read a letter written by PYLUSD Attorney Todd Robbins regarding Isaiah Gates. It states, "The allegation against Dr. Gates that he terminated Beth Scott in retaliation for raising concerns with how CTE grants were spent was not sustained. I repeat, the allegations against Dr. Gates were not sustained." In other words, Dr. Gates was cleared, according to Todd Robbins. And yet the same letter, and probably the investigators, right Todd? "And yet the same letter also says there's no interest from the board majority in bringing him back. So I ask, why not? Why is the man cleared if the allegations still being sidelined? Let's talk about what that means for taxpayers. Dr. Gates is being paid $255,000 a year to sit on leave. On top of that, the district is also paying an interim to do the very job he was hired and contracted to do. That means public dollars are funding two people for one position. That is waste. That is fiscal mismanagement. And let's not forget the human cost. Unfortunately, Dr. Gates has endured prostate cancer through all of this while also enduring the cloud of a false allegation. To deny him the chance of to return despite being cleared is just wrong. It opens the district to the very real risk of a racial discrimination lawsuit. The facts are clear. The investigation cleared him. The district is wasting taxpayer money. And the longer this continues, the greater the legal and moral failure becomes. The solution is equally clear. Reinstate Dr. Gates to his rightful position. Stop paying two people for one job. And show this community that PYLUSD values fairness, fiscal responsibility, and integrity." Todd, Leandra, thank you for your eye contact and listening. And Carrie, thanks for vancing up. Bring back Dr. Gates.
Thank you, Ms. Brodowski. That completes our speakers, Madam President.
Thank you. Okay, we will adjourn at 5:10. Thanks for your patience. We're going to reconvene out of closed session at 6:29 PM. And we do have a report out of closed session. "The Board Took Action to Approve Resolution Number 2508 to Issue Notice to Release and Reassign Certificated Employees From Their Administrative Position Pursuant to Education Code Section 44951 Effective at the End of the 25-26 School Year. And Direct the Superintendent or Designee to Send Out Appropriate Legal Notices." The motion was made by Ms. Quintero, second by Mrs. Buck, and the vote was 5-0. So Ms. Quintero, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Let the record show that all board members are here, including our student board member. And we need a motion to approve the agenda, pulling 18.2 as amended.
Second.
Carrie's already throwing things.
Okay, motion is made by Mrs. Buck, second by Mr. Frazier. All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. We have a 5-0 with a stipulated vote from our student board member. Okay, we are now going to take blue cards for comments for item number 10.1. If you'd like to speak regarding the appointment of the superintendent, we'll give you a couple of minutes to complete a blue card. At this time, we have one card. Are there anybody else wanting to speak? Okay, this is just for item 10.1. Yeah, okay.
Our first speaker tonight on item 10.1, Linda Cone, please approach the podium.
For those of you who do not know me, my name is Linda Cone. And for about 78 years, I've been associated with public education in one way or another, as a student, as a teacher-coach, and as a retired researcher. I've attended PYL Board meetings for about the last 13 years. In fact, I've been in the room longer than most people. I'm respectfully requesting that our new superintendent address a current situation that is extremely concerning to me as a great-grandparent and also as a taxpaying member of this community. This situation involves a clash between two very fundamental rights. When a parent's right to protect the innocence of a child conflicts with the right of a transgender teacher to teach that child, whose rights should prevail? Apparently, our leadership at the district has decided that transgender rights trump parent rights. I'm questioning that decision, and I'm hoping that the new superintendent will consider some of the court cases that are very germane to this issue. Obviously, Mahmood versus Taylor, that was just passed by our National Supreme Court, bears looking at. And there have been a lot of legal experts, some of whom I've talked to personally, that have suggested this decision may be very, very broad and offer very broad protection to parent rights. We also have, most significantly, a California decision, a California Supreme Court decision, and it's Hardwick versus the School Board Trustees of the Fruit Ridge School District. This 1921 decision wisely recognized a family's right to opt out of instruction to which they conscientiously opposed. There was no mention of a religious belief issue. All it hinged on was a consciously opposition to what was being instructed. I think the same broad brush is being suggested for Mahmood as well. But I think in many ways, most relevant to the current issue is a very recent May 2025 California decision, and I'm talking about Essie versus Gray, which states the following: "A child may not be compelled to say something he does not believe in and would not otherwise say." This raises the following question: Can minor children, and specifically in this case, children ages five to eight, be compelled to address a biological male?
Thank you, Ms. Cone.
Thank you, Mrs. Cone.
Thank you for your time.
At this time, I would like to make the motion to approve the appointment of Dr. Kim LeBlanc Esparza as the Superintendent of Schools effective October 6, 2025.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Anderson, second by Mrs. Blades. Any comment? Are we guys ready to vote?
Really excited.
I would just like to say welcome. We appreciate you. Am I on? No. I'd like to say welcome. We appreciate you, your interviews. We got to know her a lot and the innovation she wants to bring to the district and just her views on education and continuing, you know, like what we've been doing with OCSCS, USI. Like if you want innovation, like what we started, it's going to continue. So that's why I'm really excited. She has so much experience and she's just going to bring, I think it's just gonna, it's gonna be amazing. So, thank you. Thank you for being here tonight, and I look forward to what is going to happen in our district.
Just want to say welcome to PYLUSD. We're happy to have you and very excited to see all the things that you will do with our team and look forward to many things that we have to come. Thank you.
Vision is the word I think that I came away with from all the interviews is this woman has a vision, and I look forward to seeing what that, what that becomes in this district. There's a lot of work to do, and I think she is absolutely the person for the job. Thanks for coming.
Hi, it's nice to see you again. I stood up to say the pledge and was so pleasantly surprised to see you standing there. So thank you for being here tonight. I am also incredibly thrilled, the depth of knowledge that was shared, that we know is coming to our district, an incredible instructional leader that understands curriculum and HR and business and all of the experience that comes with that to help move us in a forward direction, bringing in the innovation, the excellence, all of our core values. So I'm really looking forward to what it's going to be over the next few years.
And I too am just over the moon excited about you coming and leading our school and the leadership experience that you've had and the examples that you presented to us and just your ideas and how you've done things in your process. I am, I'm so excited to have you here. So, welcome, and I think we need to vote.
Yes.
I would also like to point out to all of you that are here, each and every one of us are very excited about this.
Yeah.
This is not a split decision. This was not difficult, I don't think. There were, there were lots of good candidates, but all of us looked at each other through this process and were like, it's her. She's the one. So take that for what you will. I just wanted to make sure that it's very clear that this is a united group that stands behind this lady. So thank you.
True. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And there's no one opposed, so motion carries.
Our student board member said aye.
5-0, and she, she said aye. And I know the two of them are going to get along great. So at this time, I am pleased to welcome to the Placentia-Yorbalinda Unified School District, our next superintendent, Dr. Kim LeBlanc Esparza. Dr. Kim brings over three decades of experience in education, having served as a teacher, principal, director, and superintendent. Most recently, recently, she was Deputy Superintendent of Jeffco Public Schools Colorado's second-largest district, where she oversaw 74,000 students across more than 145 schools, 14,000 employees, and a $1.2 billion budget. She is credited with advancing district-wide strategic planning, school redesign initiatives, and equity-focused programs to improve outcome for all students. She has also led school districts in Colorado and Oregon, advanced equity-focused initiatives, expanded mental health services, and supported college and career readiness programs across the region. Dr. Alan Musarino will continue to serve as superintendent, ensuring a smooth transition before Dr. Kim officially begins on October 6, 2025. And on behalf of the board and our district students, families, employees, and community members, we wish to extend our appreciation to Dr. Kim for choosing to be an integral part of PYLUSD. Let's welcome Dr. Kim.
I just want to say thank you. I am honored to be here. I am really excited about the work we're all going to do together. Community is at the very heart of who I am, and I'm really excited to be a leader right alongside all of you and our community. So thank you for trusting me, and I look forward to the work we're going to do together. Thank you.
Okay, now we have our public comment announcement. Public comment cards are available in the foyer. Cards must be completed and turned in prior to the designated time for public comment, provided a maximum of three minutes per person. If translation is needed, an additional three minutes will be given. Please let us know. If we know ahead of time, we can ensure we are prepared. Civility policy, Education Code 220 prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, nationality, race, or ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or any other characteristic that is contained in the definition of hate crime set forth in Section 422.55 of the Penal Code, including immigration status. Additionally, if there are any disruptions or interference of the board's ability to conduct its meeting, the disruptive party will be given one warning. If the disruption continues, you'll be informed that the board president has found you disruptive in violation of Penal Code Section 403, Education Section 32210, and the board president will order you removed from the meeting under Government Code 54957.9, 54957.95. If removing one or several disruptive parties does not restore order, the board president will exercise their authority to clear the room in accordance with Government Code 54957.9. So now we're going to move to approving of the minutes. Yeah, I think we can.
I'd like to approve minutes 12.1, 12.2, 12.3, 12.4, all at the same time.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the regular meeting August 5th, the special meeting August 26th, the special meeting on September 2nd, and the special meeting on September 3rd by Mr. Frazier and seconded by Mrs. Blades. Is there any questions? This is the part that's going to be hard because our student board member could only vote on the one. That's probably.
Oh, on 12.1?
Yeah.
We should do two separate votes then?
Yeah, I think we should do two separate votes.
So you'll have to amend your.
I'll amend my, I'll amend my motion to approve 12.1, approve the minutes of the regular meeting August 5th, 2025.
Second.
Well, you did it the first time. Let's just stick with that. Okay, motion by Mr. Frazier, second by Mrs. Blades, as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
And a stipulated aye by our student board member.
I'll make a motion to approve the remaining minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Frazier and a second by Mrs. Buck. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Okay, so at this time, we're going to have a public hearing held relative to the certification of assurance for the fiscal year of 2025-26 regarding the availability of student textbooks and instructional material. Do we have blue cards for that, or these are just a regular public? Okay, so we're going to open up the hearing at 6:45. Anybody that wishes to speak on student textbooks and instructional materials being available is welcome to come forward. Okay, seeing done, we're going to close the public hearing at 6:45. Okay, at this time, we're going to turn the time over to Arianna Mahia to give out her report.
Good evening, President Anderson, trustees, and interim superintendent Dr. Musarino. I'm excited to be here to share recent updates from our comprehensive high schools and alternative campuses. Both Buena Vista and Parkview's dedicated staff welcomes students and families through orientations and one-on-one meetings designed to ensure success in independent study. Workshops, newsletters, and individualized support have been launched to help families establish strong routines at home. The schools also hosted a back-to-school picnic on September 5th, providing an opportunity to connect and build community. El Camino is thrilled to have welcomed 120 new and returning students to campus this year. Welcome Week activities included personalized cards for each student, student expectation presentations, getting-to-know-you activities in class, popsicles for all students, and an opportunity to send cards to educators who have positively impacted their lives. The school also launched a student store where students can redeem Raptor bucks earned for demonstrating positive behavior for snacks, El Camino gear, phone chargers, and other popular items. El Dorado affectionately welcomed a total of 2,094 Golden Hawks this year. Within the first week of school, they had freshman orientation, the huge Aloha Assembly, a tropical nest at girls' volleyball, and a wild safari at the first home football game. Just one week later, the school hosted a dance with over 60% of the entire student body attending, all within the first seven days of school. Esperanza kicked off the year with their first dance filled with music, laughter, and unforgettable moments as students celebrated together. The school is now preparing for the highly anticipated Battle of the Boulevard, its rivalry football game against Yorbalinda, taking place next Friday. In addition, Esperanza is excited to showcase its AP Capstone program at the upcoming information night on Wednesday, October 22nd. George Key School and Venture Academy will hold their annual Patriot Day assembly on September 11 at 10:00 AM in the George Key Courtyard, featuring student speakers and a performance by the Venture Choir. Venture Academy proudly recognizes students Daniela Sandana and Brian Villalba as the first two participants this year to receive paid job training through work ability. Valencia has successfully implemented a block schedule, receiving positive feedback from both staff and students. The campus is eagerly preparing for this Friday's bell game, assembly, and football matchup against El Dorado. The school also gives special recognition to its nutrition services team and tiger student workers, who serve over 2,000 students daily across eight service lines during just a 10-minute break and a 30-minute lunch. The Mustang Football Team was honored to open their season at Sophie Stadium, where they defeated Mayfair High School with a score of 41-0. The Mustang Band and Guard also had the extraordinary opportunity to perform alongside the USC Band at Band Day in the LA Coliseum, entertaining a sold-out crowd. Additionally, the Theater Department continued its award-winning tradition, earning the Macy Spare Award for the Best Show in Orange County for a second consecutive year, along with top honors for Best Dramatic Actress, Best Dramatic Actor, Best Comedian, and Best Supporting Actor. That concludes my report this evening.
Thank you so much for sharing all that. It's been a busy start to the year.
Yes.
I have a question for you. How has El Camino Real High School and the Placentia-Yorbalinda Unified School District prepared you for your life beyond high school?
Both El Camino Real High School and the Placentia-Yorbalinda Unified School District have not only given me the opportunity to grow as an individual, but they have also helped develop the confidence to believe in myself. El Camino has gifted me a second chance to value myself and continues to guide and support me in the pathway I want to pursue as a nurse. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Musarino for his superintendent report.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President, members of the board, colleagues, our family members and students, and Superintendent LeBlanc Esparza, welcome. This is my last report, so I'm going to do it with some extra gusto here. Start of school, we're thrilled to welcome back our students. We did so on the 26th and kicked off the 25-26 school year. On the first day, district leaders visited all 34 schools, and I know many of our board members did as well, and saw smiling faces, hard-working employees, eager families, and campuses that were clean and welcoming places for our community. I'm grateful to all of our employees for their preparation leading up to the start and for welcoming each and every student with care and kindness. Patriot Day, it's hard to believe that it's been 24 years since the attacks our nation endured on September 11, 2001. Each year, our school district joins the nation, remembering the thousands of Americans who lost their lives as a result of these attacks, including the brave first responders. Every year on September 11, known as Patriot Day, PYLUSD facilities fly flags at half-staff, and all schools hold special activities in remembrance. This year, be no different, as schools encourage students to wear red, white, and blue, decorate campuses with patriotic colors, hold moments of silence and flag ceremonies, and share about the day's historical significance through morning and video announcements and so much more. PYLUSD will never forget. PBIS recognitions, for those who might not recognize, that's Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. It's a school-wide management system, behavior management system. 10 of our campuses have been recognized by California PBIS for implementing the program. It is an approach that promotes students' emotional and behavioral learning, which results in increased engagement and decrease problematic behaviors over time. California PBIS oversees a statewide recognition system to honor schools that implement PBIS with fidelity to the national framework. Schools may earn recognition. Schools may earn recognitions at the platinum, gold, silver, or bronze levels, dependent upon their degree of implementation. Congratulations to Tuffrey Middle School, Tines, and Woodsboro Elementary Schools for earning gold recognition. So that's a round of applause for those three schools. Congratulations. And the thing about PBIS is it's school-wide, it's everyone. It's not just a small faction of the school, it's the entire community that gets behind it. Valades Middle School Academy, Brookhaven, Golden, Morse, Sierra Vista, and Van Buren Elementary Schools earned the silver recognition. Congratulations to those schools. And finally, congratulations to Topaz, who proudly earned the bronze recognition this year as well. Congratulations to those schools and communities. We're incredibly proud of all of our schools for their dedication and commitment to PBIS. And that concludes my final superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving to public comment, and we have 12 people wishing to speak. 15 total? Okay, so each speaker will be given two minutes.
Okay, if the first four speakers would please take a seat in the front row. Samuel Penrod, Stephanie Wade, Gloria Johnson, and Jenny Bremer. And Mr. Penrod, you are up first.
Members of the board, Justice Sotomayor warned in her dissent in Mahmoud V. Taylor that even in its narrowly-defined ruling, the court would invite chaos in public schools and inflict long-lasting harm on students. Remember, Mahmoud V. Taylor was a narrow case, not a free pass for every religious belief opt-out. Adopting broad rules here will bring costly lawsuits, costs that Christian nationalists want district taxpayers to waste. Let's be clear, when this policy says religious belief, it does not mean the mix of faiths in our community. It means one thing, the Christian nationalist agenda built on fear, racism, and division. This is not about fairness or protecting kids, it's about protecting public education and diverting taxpayer fines to schools run by Christian nationalists. So vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Penrod. Stephanie Wade?
Good evening. In preparation for this meeting, I listened to, or I spent a little bit of time looking at what people at PYL for Choice were saying. And what they were doing is they were saying that Mahmoud V. Taylor gives them the opportunity to push queer teachers out of the classroom. That's the essence of it. And they were naming these people by name, literally doxing them, suggesting threats, talking about which school sites they worked on. And one of the board members here, Ms. Blades, is an admin, I believe, of that site. Moreover, I then watched the video she recorded with Andy Falco, a video that began with a picture of somebody firing an assault rifle with the title "Ready, Aim, Fire." So I thought to myself, especially as I heard Ms. Blades in that video recording say that she thought transgender people were dangerous, I thought to myself, I'm not a dangerous violent person. And I thought, who's the real danger here? The people creating a witch hunt, including one of them who's actually, you know, fired a weapon and killed a man. And we're creating a climate of fear and intolerance. And it not only harms these teachers and certificated educators, it creates a climate of fear for every queer kid, every queer family, and, as Sam just said, creates hate and discontent in the community in a way that would cost the district money. I urge the majority on this board that has sense and reason to put the kids first and to put education first. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Gloria Johnson, please approach the podium.
Hello and welcome back. I'm Gloria Johnson, the very new and very proud president of the Association of Placentia Linda Educators. I've been here a long time. It's my 33rd year in education in PYL. I'm excited and I'm humbled to have been elected to be the voice of our teachers who embody the district's theme of every student, every day. Even though this theme carries over from last year, it has been, it is, and it will continue to be our why, because every child matters. Historically, despite countless examples of upheaval, the teachers have always worked to create classroom climates that were the calm in the storm. We couldn't fix the chaos outside, but we could shape the world within our four walls. And in this third week of the new school year, that's what our teachers strive for. Our student success is at the heart of everything we all do, regardless of your job description, whether you're sitting there, or there, or you're sitting at home. We want to give them the education they all deserve. So when we speak about class size, when we speak about special ed, when we speak about safety and schedules and curriculum, or a million other things that will pop up, we do so for our students, because everyone knows that better working conditions mean better learning conditions for them. I look forward to working with all of you, for every student, every day, for every educator, every step of the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Jenny Bremer.
Good evening. I'm Jenny Bremer from El Dorado. First, I want to give a heartfelt thank you to Dr. Musarino and Dr. Gray for their support during our school opening without a principal. We appreciate all your help and support in making the first days of school a positive experience for all of our students. Back in December, a clear commitment was made in a meeting between Alex Ternus, Renee Gray, Michelle DeHaven, and myself. Narcan Training for All Staff and Distribution of Narcan to Teachers During Pre-Service for the 2025-26 school year. Pre-service came and went, yet that commitment remains unfilled. And I do realize there's been a lot of wonder under the bridge since December. Right now, though, Narcan is sitting in offices and libraries, not in classrooms where students are. In an overdose emergency, every second counts. Thanks to Mrs. Buck, we have the doses. We had the plan. What we don't have is follow-through. Until Narcan is in every classroom, our students are at risk, and the district carries serious liability if a tragedy occurs because lifesaving medication wasn't accessible. I urge you tonight, don't wait. You know it's important. To provide a clear timeline and immediate action to put Narcan in the classrooms where it belongs, close to students, we are here to protect. Please, let's stop the nonsense, let's focus on the most important things, which are those kids in our class. Let's keep them safe. We have what we need. We just need you guys to follow through with it. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Our next four speakers, please approach the first row. Teresa Dues, Canan Dorum, Abigail J., and Jennifer J. Teresa Dues, please approach the podium. Thank you.
Thank you. I am Dr. Teresa Dues. I'm a university professor, and I have been a mental health therapist and an educator for about 25 years. I'm very concerned about students in the Placentia Yorba Linda School District being forced to forcing students to the LGBTQ+ curriculum by allowing teachers to practice these behaviors and beliefs in a public classroom. It is, I believe it is an infringement on their rights and a violation of the child's right, not to be, the parent-child right, not to be able to opt-out of the classroom, being forced to endure these practices, especially from last year when these students had a teacher who came to school as one gender, and then they come back to school this year as another gender, and those kids are not allowed to opt-out. That's very concerning. That can be very traumatizing to the student. So that is my concern, and that's what I'm presenting to you all today. Thank you.
Thank you. Canan Dorum, please approach the podium.
So I have spent the last week hearing a lot of things out of some of the, one of the Instagram accounts that trustee Weisenberger has affiliations with, and I also spent an hour and a half last night listening to trustee Weisenberger talking to Christian nationalist Andy Falco and referencing a couple of court cases that are not necessarily applicable to this case, but as you heard, some of the folks here today listened to that and brought that ahead of you. So for anybody who's not aware, trustee Weisenberger, I'm referring to Leandra Blades. So I grew up in a church that taught that divorce was immoral, and that once you got married, that was it. The law does not allow me, doesn't say that, oh, I can, because she's, you know, she's gotten divorced, and now this is her, this is the name that she's going by now, I don't necessarily have some, like, legal-protected right to be like, no, it's my liberty, I'm going to call her trustee Weisenberger, right? There's not, there's not a, like, a court case around this, because obviously, it's incredibly offensive for me to not refer to her by her name. And for trustee Blades to be going on social media, going on podcasts, and suggesting to parents that there's some sort of trauma to students for having to learn a new name like the people in her life had to learn, is just absurd, and it's incredibly offensive to the teachers that you are supposed to be supporting as a trustee. Thank you.
Thank you. Abigail J.?
To Leandra Blades, not only is it illegal, but against board policy to discriminate against a teacher in the manner that you have. Mahmoud versus Taylor clearly states that provided the teacher does not, and I quote, "convey a particular viewpoint about same-sex marriage and gender," it does not, and I quote, "substantially interfere with the religious development." This also violates Board Policy 5145.3, which states, "The Board prohibits at any district school or school activity unlawful discrimination, including discriminatory harassment, intimidation, and/or bullying targeted based on their sex, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, or expression. Outing and urging parents to opt-out of having this teacher is clearly meant to intimidate the teacher and is a violation of this policy." Administrative Policy 5145.3 states that the Board must, and I quote, "annually notify all students and parents and guardians of the district's non-discrimination policy, including its responsibility to provide a safe, non-discriminatory school environment for all people, including transgender and gender non-conforming people. Outing this teacher and encouraging discrimination clearly does not provide a safe environment for this teacher." I ask you, what is next? If being in the same room as a trans teacher violates a student's religious freedom, would the same not apply to students? Are you going to start advocating to dox every single LGBTQ student to the entire district? I hope not. I strongly urge the Board to oppose any future actions or rhetoric that unnecessarily targets the LGBTQ community, including the doxing and targeting of one of the district's teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer J.?
Superintendent Musarino, Dr. Musarino? Can I just interject one time? I watched an orange board meeting one day, and there was people coming up to the podium, and the attorney actually said that if there is slanderous, and if there's accusations, lies being told, that you're able to, from the dais, say, state what the actual truth is. And so the truth is, I have nothing to do with PYL for Choice. So doxing people, talking about teachers, doing any of this stuff, is all fabricated, it's all lies. I don't have anything to do with the website, I'm not an admin, and so I have not stated who this teacher is, what their name is on social media. So just to make that clear.
Jennifer J.?
Once again, our LGBTQ population is under attack. Let's get something straight. Mahmoud versus Taylor allows parents to opt-out of curriculum, not people. Every teacher that gets hired has to meet certain qualifications in order to receive their teaching license and get a teaching position. No or in the job description doesn't mention that teachers have to be of a certain sexual orientation or gender identity. In fact, this information should not be disclosed at all, and opens up staff members to harassment and discrimination. Being gay or being trans has absolutely no bearing on how effective of a teacher someone will be. If parents start accusing teachers of being gay or being trans, it puts those teachers in a dangerous position. We do need gay and trans teachers in our school system, because they serve as a lifeline for our LGBTQ students. When students see themselves represented successfully in life, it helps them to become more hopeful and motivated for their own futures, and their classrooms serve as a safe space for this highly vulnerable population. Allowing parents to pull their children out of classrooms taught by LGBTQ teachers opens up a Pandora's Box. What's next? We don't agree with Muslims. Should we pull our children out of all Muslim teachers' classrooms? We don't want our children taught by black people. Let's just pull them out of those classrooms, too. Our kids need to be taught by people with varying life experiences and different perspectives, and we need to let people live their lives the way they want. Thank you.
Thank you. The next four speakers, Kristin Muster, Crystal Noble, Ben Stubbs, and Chris Cork. Kristin, you may approach your podium. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been a Yorba Linda resident for 45 years now. I am a proud mother of two Aztecs and one hawk in special education. I was floored when I saw this agenda, and I speak in support and pride of our LGBTQ+ teachers, not only our teachers, but our parents, our PTA board members, our volunteers, and our students. I'm a licensed clinical social worker, and I think any policy that discriminates against our teachers and creates fascism of looking at a person and deciding, like me, what am I? Are you going to label me in some way? I don't think that we have any room for that within our classrooms. And I point back to Education Code 220, which, President Anderson, you so wonderfully shared with us and reminded us, we need to stand by this. We cannot allow this policy to go through. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Crystal Noble?
Hello, I'm, hello, board. I want to speak about the Dr. Gates situation. And I also want to read directly from the email from Todd Robbins. The allegation against Dr. Gates that he terminated Bess Scott in retaliation for raising concerns with how CTE grants were spent was not sustained, again, not sustained, meaning he was cleared. And yet, in that same letter, it also states that the board majority has no interest in bringing him back. And think about that, a man proven innocent still being punished. Why? It's not about justice, it's not about students, it's about power, politics, and vindictiveness. This isn't just cruel, it's costly. Taxpayers are paying Dr. Gates a salary, which is 102, or excuse me, $255,000 a year to sit at home, and they plan to keep him on leave until June of 2026. So that's approximately 18 months, since he's been on leave since December. And they're also, they also are paying an interim to do the very job that he was hired to do, so that's two salaries for one position. That's waste, that's mismanagement, and that is our money being thrown away. But the deepest cruelty is while he was on, while he was forced on leave, Dr. Gates was also fighting prostate cancer. He wasn't just battling for his career, he was he was battling for his life. And this board majority chose to leave him in exile, under the cloud of a false allegation, even as he fought for his health. This is inhumane and unconscionable. And it opens this district to a devastating risk, racial discrimination lawsuit that will cost taxpayers far more than simply doing the right thing. The facts are undeniable. He was cleared. Taxpayers are being, tax dollars are being wasted. And the moral and legal failures of this board majority grow every single day. Please bring Dr. Gates back. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben Stubbs, please approach the podium.
Hello, good evening, members of the board and community. And welcome, Dr. Kim, as a superintendent. And also to, thanks, Ms. Mahia, for sharing your pathway with the nursing. That's pretty encouraging for all the high school students coming in. But real quick, on behalf of parents that are putting in requests for the Mahmoud thing, when they put in that request, they're getting back a response from the district. And what I read it as is that the district basically is saying that explicitly, that material that they're addressing is not specifically in the curriculum, but in the interest of, basically, what I read as DEI, that the district will and can and is interested in including any of that in a supplemental material if the teacher so deems it. But in that regard, that, you know, that's problematic. The other problematic thing is that the form that parents have to fill out basically puts their religion on trial, I see. And the reason I say that is because they have to itemize their sincerely held religious beliefs, whatever those are. And it's up to the board, or the district, rather, to approve or deny it. So I just find that unfair. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Cork.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight, I'm here as a parent of four kids, three of which are girls at Golden Elementary. And I've got some concerns about a transgender being placed in the elementary classroom. Now, let me state, my issue is not with the individual personally, but with the impact this could have on young, impressionable kids, okay? So elementary school should be, should be a place where you learn about math and science. The kids are already facing enough challenges as it is. They don't need adult identity issues added to the classroom, okay? And this is evident by some of the talks that I've heard from kids outside at school pickups already. When my kids come home, I want them to ask me about their homework, right? Ask me to help them with their homework. Ask me to do stuff with them, not come and asking questions about certain things that are going on in the classroom when it pertains to the teacher that they have. Last year, it was a man. Now this year, a woman, right? As a parent, I feel that while schools are pushing inclusivity for some lifestyles, families like mine who hold traditional lifestyles are just getting pushed aside, right? And basically telling me I'm the bad guy if I don't embrace someone else's, right? Which is not okay. So my question is simple. Knowing that not all parents would be on board with this, I would like to know what alternatives exist. Simply stated, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. And our last three speakers, John Quackenbush, Denise May, and Ms. Brodowski. And John, you may approach the podium.
Well, good evening, superintendent and board trustees. It's been a while, but welcome back. And I did read the recognition of religious beliefs policy. I understand the policy and I think what you've guys written so far is good, vote yes. And like several parents up here, I think there needs to be clarity on the Mahmoud, what they can and can't opt out of and all that, so that we have these, you know, just so parents understand that stuff. You know, I'm gonna be kind of all over the place here, but anyways, I did want to say, Dr. Musterino, Musterino, thank you very much for filling in and doing a wonderful job here with the board and everything. And good luck with you and stuff. And welcome, Dr. Kim. One of the things I'm gonna get, like I said, bounce around, I'm gonna bring up here. I know we probably have some, I think we still have some district issues with funds and things. Brought this up briefly one time. I'd really like it if the board could have the staff and stuff really look into solar panels and the cost benefit it might have to pitting over our parking structures, give cars shade, maybe even in some of the fields. I have not done a lot of research, but I've done a little bit of review. And from what I can tell, it seems like school districts are getting tenfold back from the investment. So this might be a way to help us with some of our funds that we need to do. The other thing is, I hope, I haven't heard much about USI, and I know the charter school is going, seems like it's going forward and everything. So it'd be nice to have some updates on how USI is going, what's happening with that, if it's thriving. You know, we do want it to thrive, but we just don't want it to burden us and the school district itself with financial issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Denise May.
Hello. I just wanted to say welcome to our wonderful school district. I'm glad to see we have a new superintendent. Thank you, Dr. Musterino, for your time spent here. We appreciate it. I'm excited to see what you can bring to our district. You have some amazing teachers in this district. We are in our third week of school and our teachers are at schools early and staying late to ensure all of our students' needs are met every day. We have amazing staff in this district, secretaries, bus drivers, special ed aides, custodial, librarians, nutrition services, and computer instructional specialists who collaborate with teachers and help our students shine. We have principals that give their all to the students, parents, and staff to create a safe and caring learning environment. I've had four children go through this school district. They've all turned into successful adults. Thank you. And much of that is too, the guidance of their teachers and the school staff that they experienced here. And I appreciate every single one of them. Some are still in the audience here. So I wanted to welcome you. I'm excited to see what you have to offer. I love working here. And I love our district. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Brodowski.
Good evening. First, I want to warmly welcome you, Dr. Leblanca Sparza, as our new superintendent. We are happy to have a permanent face here. That'll be great. We're hopeful for your leadership and the positive direction you can bring to this district. I'd like to share, to share concern that will likely require your immediate attention, as obviously are other things going on as well. But I'd like you to first take a look at, stop spending double money on our HR leadership. The situation was spoken of earlier in a letter from PYL USD attorney Todd Robbins. It states that the allegation against Dr. Isaac Gates, that he terminated Beth Scott in retaliation for raising concerns with how CTA grants were spent, was not sustained. In other words, Dr. Gates was cleared. Dr. Gates was cleared. And yet, the same letter also says there's no interest from the board majority on bringing him back. Meanwhile, taxpayers are paying Dr. Gates $255,000 a year to sit on administrative leave while also paying an interim to do his job. That is two people for one position. This is wasteful, fiscally irresponsible, and harmful to the trust between the district and our community. To keep him sidelined despite being cleared is unjust and exposes this district to the real risk of racial discrimination, a racial discrimination lawsuit. Dr. Leblanca Sparza, we welcome you tonight because we need strong leadership. This is an opportunity for you to clean up the situation, restore fairness, stop the waste of public funds, and reinstate Dr. Gates to the role he was hired to do. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our comments tonight.
Thank you all. Okay. We're gonna move to our general functions. We need a motion to adopt several policies on charter schools?
I'll make a motion to adopt Board Policy 0420.4, Charter School Authorization, Board Policy 0420.41, Charter School Oversight, Board Policy 0420.43, Charter School Revocation, Board Policy 0420.42, Charter School Renewal, and Board Policy 7160, Charter School Facilities, second reading.
Who had that? Okay. A motion by Mr. Fraser and a second by Mrs. Blades. And I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Musterino.
Thank you, Madam President. The first reading, when we had those at the last board meeting, there were a number of recommendations that the Board of Education made. And our attorney has taken all of that and has come back now with what's before you today. So with that, I'll hand it over to Suki.
Good evening, everyone. So you are going to be considering five board policies tonight. I've also brought some of the administrative exhibits that go with these policies, just for reference and discussion. After listening to the feedback that was provided by the board to me last time about some of the concerns and how you wanted to address those in the board policies, you should have copies of the red line policies as well as the clean. I'll just go quickly through some of them, or if your preference is to go to a specific one, I'm happy to do it that way as well. Okay. So for example, the Charter School Authorization, at the very beginning of this policy, there were concerns that were expressed about how do we make sure that the board gets copies of what is being submitted? So it clearly and explicitly states, and this same recitation of the obligation of the district staff is noted in the administrative regulation as well. So the district staff will provide the board copies of all new or renewal petitions and supporting materials within three business days. And more importantly, due to the proliferation of the petitions that are going to the county board, all of those petitions will be submitted to the board as well within that three-day timeframe, so that the board has the opportunity to consider whether it wishes to make any kind of presentation at the county level.
Not to be nitpicky, is three days enough? Should it be five? Or does it matter?
Well, most of the time, these petitions are submitted electronically. So...
It could be instantaneous.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you for including that. Those, we missed some in the past because this wasn't included. So I appreciate that and hopefully we'll be more transparent.
Yeah, absolutely. Moving on, on page five, the timelines for board action. As the board is aware, when a charter petition or a material revision is submitted, there is a 60-day, 90-day timeframe, which can be extended upon mutual agreement by both parties. There was concern about the scheduling of some of these. And so there really isn't, so the first timeline, so to speak, is the 60 days to hold a public hearing. Second timeline is 90 days. So there's nothing that says that you have to hold a public hearing on day 59, and there's nothing that says you have to hold the hearing on day two, right? The only specific requirement that's there is that at least 15 days before the board takes action, the staff recommendations and findings have to be posted. So we want to kind of like work backwards from that. So what I've done is to say here that the board recognizes the seriousness and complexity of the requirements that are dictated by the Education Code in looking at a charter petition, reviewing it, the number of people that are involved, and also the seriousness of purpose in having this charter petition approved. So therefore, the board's expectation is that the district staff is going to take the full complement of time to consider the petition and to, so the full complement of time, meaning the 90 days. And absent extenuating circumstances, and there could be some, there, you know, the absent extenuating circumstances, the board's expectation is that the full complement of time will be taken to review, make the recommendation, and then have the board take action.
Thank you again for adding that. We fast-tracked before and that cost us. So this will hopefully slow us down a little.
The next one, under approval. We oftentimes, you know, when we see a charter petition, as we've talked about before, you know, it's the document, that's the controlling document between the district and the charter. But sometimes it's not possible to have everything finalized in time for the board meeting. Sometimes things come up during the charter term itself. So this gives the board the opportunity to enter into various MOUs with a charter, whether it be for special ed, whether it be for a facility, whether it be for operational issues. It gives you that authority. You always have that authority, of course, but this is just codified, to say that those kind of MOUs, should the board desire it, can be agreed upon and then changed if necessary. Okay, so that was the main one on the Charter School Authorization. With Charter School Oversight, which is Board Policy 41, so in order to address some of the significant issues that were brought up by the board regarding material revisions of charters, there's a significant amount of discussion. And the one primary thing that I tried to do to address the board's concern of, how do we bring them back, is to have language in there that says, "An individual board member or the superintendent or designee may place an item on an upcoming board agenda to request consensus from the board, whether to bring a future board meeting, a request for material revision to a charter authorized, district authorized charter petition in accordance with the requirements of Ed Code 47607. The board president and superintendent will agendize such items in accordance with the district's usual agenda-setting practices." So this gives, you know, obviously, the superintendent has the authority to say to the board, this is something that I think should be revised, the board itself. But if there's an individual board member that wants it, then this allows that individual board member to bring it back to the, to the board and see if there's consensus for moving forward.
Thank you also for adding that.
Yes, thank you. So we don't have any more of the issues that we had this year. That should clear things up.
And I also like that you added, you know, what a material revision should include.
Yeah.
And the definition. So I think it's, yeah, I think we're gonna solve a lot of our issues.
That's what I'm here for. So that you don't, you can see less and less of me. Okay. So under renewal, this was something that, a charter is usually granted for five years unless it's a high-performing school. So, you know, the expectation is, once every five years, we're going to be seeing them coming up for renewal. There have been instances when charters have tried to submit a renewal early. And so the language to this is to try to address that. We can't control when a charter is going to submit it, but what we want is as much information as possible about the charters for the board to make an informed decision. So basically, what this says, under renewal, is that a charter school may submit its request for renewal on or after July 1 of the final year of the term. And it also should submit it only after receiving and being authorized to share it with the district documentation of the statewide testing results from the pentuplet, pentuplet year of the charter's current term, i.e. the last year of the preceding submittal of the, so basically, July 1 or after, preferably September, October, because that's when all of the educational data is available and it's no longer embargoed. So there's that. Revocation, we didn't have any changes. Charter School Facilities, again, to address the concerns of the board. And that same change is also reflected in the administrative regulation, is that within the same period of time, the district staff will provide copies of all requests submitted in accordance with Ed Code 47614. So it's the same three days. Again, it's real easy. They're all submitted electronically. They're all submitted, you know, usually October 31st at midnight, because it's a November 1 deadline. But that also then tells you, this is what we're looking at. This year, I think that we'll probably get one from California Republic Leadership Academy because the facility that they were in, somebody else is using it, and, you know, there's a little bit of change. So we'll probably get something from them. I was recently at an Orange County board meeting. There's another charter that the board is likely to approve. So we may be getting something from them as well. But you'll know within three days of us knowing.
I have a question. Am I allowed to ask about an existing charter and just a question for the board if there was a certain amount that was promised? And perhaps they only have, like, they said they needed space for 120-something students and now maybe there's only five in the facility?
Who could that be?
What, what do we, what, can, can you explain what we do? Because that's a question from the community when you don't see that there's a lot of space that's being used that's not very full. So can you explain how this works if they were promising a certain number and we're only, we're way under the expectation?
Sure. And it's public information that the district board approved a facilities use agreement with Magnolia. And that Magnolia is limited to having 120 students this year and 120 students next year. In terms of the facilities use agreement, it essentially is... In terms of the facilities use agreement, it essentially was a settlement agreement because they had originally asked for, so in order to submit a request for a facility to a district, whether you're authorized by the district or by the county, in some cases by the state, you have to have at eight, at least 80 in-district students. Okay? So they could have students from outside the district as well, but the district's obligation for space is only for district students. Magnolia had argued that they were, I think it was like well over 200, that they were arguing. And the manner in which the challenge to their projections was conducted, you know, there was disagreement between the district and the charter school about that. They also filed a lawsuit. And in order to resolve that lawsuit, and in order to resolve it for a longer period of time, so that it's less disruptive to the district, we have a two-year agreement. What that two-year agreement says is that they get space for 120. So they, they don't get space for 121, but they get space for 120. And they are, that, they can do what, they can enroll five kids, they can enroll whatever. So if there's, there's an over-allocation penalty that's in there. So if they don't get the number of kids that they thought that they were going to be getting, so that's when the over-allocation penalty kicks in. But that doesn't kick in until all the way in April. The, if they truly are having only X number of kids that the community is thinking that they're having, then when their Prop 39 request comes up for the 27, 28 school year, that will obviously play into the role of the offer that the district makes at that time.
I'm just trying to figure out how to word it. Is there any way to put something in one of these board policies that prohibit independent charters from like advertising on our school premises?
When you say independent, are you talking about the ones that we've offered a facility agreement with? Because they have their, if you have a facility use agreement...
And they can advertise on what, their facility portion. But they can't, like, say, go to a high, a carnival or a football game and pass out flyers?
They can. So anything that's a public place?
Public place?
Yeah. Anything that's a public place, they have the, they're another business that we're competing with, essentially. So they have the right to go to those public spaces, take out ads, go on Instagram. I mean, I, this is, that tells you, like, you know, who's following me because Magnolia's popping up on my Instagram feed. So they have the right to do that. What they don't have the right to do is, like, for example, tonight, they could have come and, you know, it's a public forum. They can't, like, for example, impede traffic or something at one of our schools by standing and trying to give out flyers. But if they're on public property, they have the right to do that.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
Questions come up several times.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any other questions?
I just want to confirm. So we have, we're in the position we are with Magnolia because it, we did things that we could have done better. Adding these deadlines and timelines in here, will that help us prevent this from happening again? Or being able to follow the right steps to make sure that it's, we're adequately giving time or giving space for 80 or more, but they don't have 80. So we want to protect our space.
Right. I think the more eyes that you have on a document, there's more input that can be provided. There's more, you know, feedback that can be provided. And so I think it's, I think it's great that the board is involved. And I would never want the board to be making a decision about something that they weren't aware of right from the get-go. Thank you.
Thank you so much for making all those changes. I know that's a lot of work. And I'm grateful now that we have clear policies that we can follow and refer back to. So it's very black and white when everything should be taking place. So thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Okay. Saying all of that, let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries five to zero with an aye from our student board member. Okay, we're, now we're moving to the next, 17.2.
I'll make a motion to revise board policy 6141.2, recognition of religious beliefs and customs. Second reading?
Second.
It was Mrs. Blades? Okay. Thank you. Motion by Mr. Frazier, second by Mrs. Blades. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Musserino.
Thank you, Madam President. Much like the last set of policies, this was originally read for the first time at our last board meeting. And we asked our counsel to, or the Board of Education provided recommendations for some changes. And our counsel, Todd, is here to discuss those tonight.
All right, good evening. You can see in the middle of the page, in the paragraph that starts, "Staff shall not coerce." That is where the strikeouts approve. We were asked to modify the proposal, or I'm sorry, the language, rather, to take out the word encouraging and some of the language around that particular sentence. So we modified this a little, sorry, I don't have the color copy of it. But we also wanted to clarify the discussion of official duty, official duties versus personal time. So we tried to put some clarifying language in there as well. So in the first sentence, "Staff shall not coerce students in prayer or other religious activities as part of their official duties." And then this is the clarifying language, "Including all time staff are providing services to the district and/or responsible for the supervision of district pupils." And we make a reference to the California Title V regulations. The next sentence, "When acting in their private capacity," and then again, more clarification, "and not on duty and/or responsible for the supervision of district pupils, staff are not prohibited from communicating with students regarding prayer or other religious activity." And this addresses the discussion we had concerning communications outside of school where the staff member and the student may attend the same place of worship. Additionally, "Staff shall not prohibit or discourage any student from praying or otherwise expressing the student's religious beliefs, so long as this does not disrupt a classroom or other district-sponsored activity." We just changed the word "school" to "district" in that sentence. And that's the extent of the changes to the policy.
Last time we talked about this, you said that there was still, I believe CSBA was still finalizing their response, but you said you had already...
Yeah, they, they came out, and this is consistent with that.
This is consistent, there's no other changes that they made.
Yeah.
So my question is, I thought the last time we were talking about putting Mahmood in here and having like an explanation, because this whole thing came about because of the Mahmood case, and I still don't see that it's recognized.
There's a reference in the legal citations?
I understand it's referenced in legal citations, but if you're going to have the parents, are they going to be able, you know, you know, we know to look at the references, but do the parents know to look at the references? And so I'm, my whole thing is, is are we making this easy for the parents to read it if they're going to pull up the policy and understand it? Because if I'm a parent and I look and I see all this religious stuff, then I don't know where the, what they're talking about and what my, like, if I don't understand what Mahmood is. I mean, I'm still getting, even after the last board meeting, even after an email, which the email didn't really talk about Mahmood very much or explain what these, what the parents could opt their kids out of the classroom. Like, I just feel like we're kind of like missing the point. And I also kind of feel like, too, that we have other things like Hardwick, and we even have the latest Encinitas case, the, the one that they were talking about where no child is compelled to state something that he does not believe in in the classroom. And so I feel like that stuff should be in here also, so the parents have this rush from point. Because right now, we're just talking about this stuff, but we're not giving them really a roadmap to understand. Like, I'm getting calls daily, like, what is going on here? And like, what are my rights? What is this? What's, what's happening here? Especially with, you know, the incidents that we've been having lately. You know, they're asking for, you know, they're asking for guidance. And then if I direct them to the policy, the policy really doesn't tell them anything. So I don't understand, how come we're not making this more broad and putting in Mahmood? Why we're not putting in Hardwick? Why we're not putting in, it's not, it's from Encinitas School District, it's not the case. It's SC, it's on the versus Ward. But we have all these things, so the parents are aware of what their religious rights and what their, their choices are. Because like with Mahmood, I understand that it's coming back that it's just curriculum-based, but, you know, is Mahmood broader? And people are saying, it is broader, but it might have to go through lawsuits. And then, you know, you have Hardwick, which is non-religious exemptions. You can opt out of things on moral beliefs. And then we have Encinitas, which I was going to say it again. No child can be compelled to state something that he does not agree with. It violates his First Amendment. And so I don't understand why we're not putting this stuff in here, like, into the policy and not just like at the reference at the bottom. Like, why we're not explaining these things? So the parents have a right to know when they read this, they say, okay, well, what are my options? And we just need, we need to, I, I just feel like it's still, it's still like murky to the parents. It's still like, you know, and then they call us, and we're trying to explain everything. And then the district sends out an email, but it's saying exactly basically what this policy is. Why are we not putting Mahmood out? Why are we not putting Hardwick out? Why are we not putting out the Encinitas case? So the parents know, my child can't be compelled to say anything in the classroom that he does not believe is true. Like, why are we not doing that? Why are we not talking about Mahmood? And talking about what the case actually is? Why are we not talking about Hardwick? Like, why aren't we putting this out there and actually telling the parents all of the information? And that's why there's such a lack of trust within this district, is because they feel like everything is being hidden. Like, I've had parents say, I watched your board meeting, the last, the last meeting, and it was said with Marilyn, Todd, and you that you guys needed to explain Mahmood and what was in the AR and what was the, the things that were being talked about. And then the email came out, and it was not what we talked about. It was, it was just kind of the same of this. And they say, well, what are my, like, what is this? What does this mean? What does this apply to? So I would like to see another email go out and explain these cases, or explain something. So, you know, and explain to, like, I mean, these parents, parents need to know. We've had over 30 opt-outs, you know, for, for some classroom stuff. And all we're saying to these parents is no. But then we're telling them, we have these cases that have just been done, May 2025. The boy was just on TV the other day, and they said, "You are not compelled to say something that you do not believe is true." But yet, we're not allowing an opt-out in the classroom. And we're not, and we're forcing a child to say something that he doesn't believe in. So I feel like we are setting ourselves up for a lawsuit with this. And so I feel like we need to have the conversation, we need to study what this stuff is. And you guys, and, and it needs to be explained to the parents why they can't opt out of a classroom. It needs to be explained to the parents about Mahmood, how broad is it? Or how, or you're not willing to go that, that broad. Like, I feel like they need the knowledge, because right now, what we're giving them is not, it's not informing them. Like, they, you send emails home to busy parents who are working, you know, working all these jobs, and, and they see this, and they go, well, what the heck is this? But then also, too, what I was, and, and maybe somebody can give me a little bit of guidance. It would appear that if we have anything in our curriculum that would fall under Mahmood and controversial issues, all of these things, that we would either take it out or we would notify the parents, so they would know. But in the email or in the opt-outs, when people are opting out, they're saying, well, this is only for sex ed, which Mahmood is not just about sex ed. And so are you covering the books in the library? And then also, too, are we, are we, are we going to put it on parents? Because the emails that are returning home to these parents are, this is, this is a section that you can opt out of, but if you see something, or if something comes home, or some, or your child, you know, you see something in your child's curriculum that violated your religious beliefs, come to me or come to us, tell us, and then you can opt out. Well, most parents are going to be ticked at that point, because the damage is already done in their mind. And so why are we as a district not going through everything, looking at everything, and not saying, well, this is what we're going to say, that, you know, there could be problems in here, so yes, you can opt out, but then if you see something, you let us know. Like, if, in, in my mind, if I was opting out, like, because Mahmood dealt with books, if I was opting out, I would want to know, for that librarian to know that my kid is part of the opt-out in the library. So if there's some controversial book that they try to check out, I don't know, is there a little flashing red light that says, there's an opt-out here? I don't know what the answer is, but I just feel like we're not doing our due diligence to make the parents comfortable to send our kids anymore to our schools. We've had a, a parent pull out, they've absolutely left our district. Because they're so frustrated, we've had parents ask to sit in, you know, on the classroom or go into the library, and the parents are being told no. So then they're sitting here, so they're saying, well, you can't opt out. You know, you can opt out your kid, but then if you guys see something, they're, well, how are we supposed to see something if we don't have access to the schools? And so that's the question that was asked today. If I can't go in the library, because I'm not a volunteer, if I can't go into the classroom where I believe something that hap, is against my religious beliefs and is violating the instant, like, something like the Encinitas case, if I can't go in there and observe, how do I know what's happening? And why do I have to wait for it to be too late? And so I guess that's the question here, is we need some clear, parents need to be clear. We don't want this mur, like, we don't want murk, this to be murky. Like, we need to be clear-cut, because that's when we lose students. We're already 400 students down. Like, we talk about all these finances. We've lost 400 students since last December. That's $6 million for our district. And so if we aren't open and we're not transparent with our community about all of this stuff and about all of, everything that they can do, we're just going to keep losing more because we're going to keep losing trust. I mean, I had a girl today that, you know, she, they're at Esperanza. There's a boy in the girls' bathroom. And they sit here, what do I do? You know, they're calling, what do I do? I'm, I'm afraid. I'm afraid. You know, like, and the parents call, what do we do? Does that fall under any of this stuff? Is there clear direction from our district telling parents what they can do? Who is our Title IX coordinator? Do we have a Title IX coord, okay, there. Okay, so we have a Title IX coordinator. So is there clear instructions for what these parents can do when they get put in these situations? Is there, like, I feel like there needs to be clear definitions. Because anymore, it's just, you, I mean, for us to be taking so many phone calls, I don't mind it, it's what I'm elected to do, but for us to have to take all these phone calls and to feel like we get nowhere, like, you email and then you don't get anything back, or, well, I don't know, no, you can't opt out. You can't do this, you can't do that. Well, why? And is there a reason why we can't opt out? Is there a reason why children can't opt out of a classroom for a 30-minute class once a week? Is there a reason that we can't do this if they're going to use the Encinitas case? So they need to know, like, legally, why they can't opt out, because right now, they're blaming the district. The district won't let us opt out. The district won't let us opt out. And I mean, as, if we, and if we think about, like, I don't know if the Encinitas case is so fresh, it's only from May, does that trump Ed. Code? Like, you know, from the Ed. Code that's been established from before. So when we go through this policy, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking about. Because El Dorado, we have teachers still asking for pronouns, and there's flags in there. And so they're calling and they're saying, why was my child compelled to give his pronouns when he does not believe in that? So right there, we have another case that's being violated. Like, why are we not empowering the students and empowering the parents that if a teacher's asking for certain things, that this could violate certain rights? Like, we need to be, it, it just needs to be out there, it looks like we're hiding stuff. If you want to answer what your pronouns are, I don't know why teachers are asking children what their pronouns are and their gender or identity. I don't know why they would be asking teenagers that, it's against the law to ask adults that. But we need to, we need to be transparent. What are your rights as a student? What are your rights as a parent? And then also, too, what are employee rights? And so I feel like this is such a huge issue, we have to do better than just this policy that basically just says, you know, religious beliefs. So that's kind of, you know, where I am with this. And I'm, I am frustra, I am frustrated. And I'm frustrated that we don't feel like our parents feel like, like we're hiding things. I'm frustrated that, you know, the board doesn't, like, I mean, I didn't know any of this was going on. And so it's, it's frustrating not to know. And it's frustrating not to be able to help the parents, and it's frustrating not to have other plans. But I think we can do better. And I think we can devise plans to work with parents. And so in all of this policy that we're doing together, why can't we do better and spell it all out and inform the parents so they know? Because if we're not going to have a flag policy, you know, we're not going to have certain things that just keeps this politics and the noise out, then we have to have something that tells of rights and tells what, you know, what you can do. So that's where I am with this. I'm really sorry to everyone that, 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 for everyone, that's, it, this whole thing, it just sucks. It really sucks. And so I'm sorry that people have felt that the board's not... It really sucks. And so I'm sorry that people have felt that the board's not being transparent, that people don't feel they're being supported. I'm just, I apologize, but this is, as I've said before, you know, as I've said before, I went live. Because I, um, you know, and I never called, said anything that some of these people are saying, which is just absolutely ludicrous. But I was very careful what I said, I just repeated these three cases and said, this is the only thing I think we have right now to go on. Where you can talk to the district about this. But if the district won't talk to the parents and won't give them the policies, then they have to come to us. And they have to come to other people, they have to go seek outside help so they can advocate for their kids. We as a district should be helping the parents be able to advocate for their kids, no matter what side of the aisle, no matter what religion you are. We should be doing that. So this whole thing should be crystal clear. And that's all I have to say.
For right now, for right now.
So.
I, I think it would be good at this time to have, uh, Mr. Robbins or Mr.
Well, let's, let's hear from Todd.
So I would have to say, I, I understand the board policy maybe being more vague, I, I guess it's okay. Um, because the real thing, the real thing that's important is to make sure that it's clear what parents can do and how they do it. In the, uh, this is, this is the directive, I believe. From the district that says, oh, this is the parent handbook. That gives a paragraph. Titled Religious Exemptions for Instruction. EC Section five one two four zero, whenever religious beliefs conflict with any part of health, family life. Or sex education classes, students can be excused from that part of the instruction upon written parent request. Students taking courses, I'll close this. Uh, students taking courses for University of California credit may not be excused from major sections of the curriculum, makes sense. The next paragraph, in light of the United States Supreme Court's decision in Mahmoud versus Taylor. Two four dash two nine seven, twenty twenty-five, parents guardians have the right to request that their child be excused from specific instruction. Including the use of materials or storybooks that address topics of gender and sexuality. Where such instruction is determined by the parent. To be in direct conflict with their sincerely held religious beliefs concerning the religious upbringing of their child. To exercise this right, parents guardians must provide written notification to the school administration specif, specifying. The instruction, we need two spaces there, whoever wrote this. Of materials to which they object on religious grounds. Consent with AR six one four one dat, point two, the school provide adv, uh, advanced notice of instruction involving. These topics to facilitate such requests where an opt-out is granted for instruction and assignments. Uh, that are linked to specific learning standards, students may be provided with alternative assignments. That's very clear. And I don't understand why that wasn't the email. It's in the student, the parent handbook. So it's obvious that this is what it means. That needs to be communicated. Now, I understand this is about curriculum specific, and I know Mahmoud is specifically about curriculum specific. But now we're talking about a situation where parents object to the teacher in the classroom because of the lifestyle that they are. Clearly promoting that goes against their strongly held religious beliefs, which is just a fact. You can say that it's mean or it's unkind, it's just true. And in that case. There, I am assuming that there is going to be precedent set sometime pretty soon where we're gonna have to make decisions about that. I know that this is about instruction. I think parents' rights are extremely important and to deny parents. The right to protect their children in the way that they feel they need to be protected is going to be a problem, and I, I've said it before, I don't wanna be. An example district. So I think we need to do something to clarify how we handle that specific situation going forward.
So the question we have is, is, is if Encinitas just came down and. You can't compel a child to call or to say something that he does not believe in, why is there no opt-out?
Okay. Couple of things. Encinitas is a district court case, so it's not binding on this part of California, but it doesn't create a bucket of rights that's any different than what Mahmud created. So. It's, it's a district court case, so it's only binding on Encinitas right now. If it gets appealed to the Ninth Circuit, it may have, and, and gets upheld. Uh, it may would have more binding authority on this district. Hardwick is a case from nineteen twenty-one, dealing with a parent's religious objection to their child dancing the foxtrot. Um, and not being able to have an alternative PE assignment. Um, the kid was actually expelled. Um, and so on rid of mandate, the parents took the school district to, to court. Saying they shouldn't have been expelled, they should have been provided an alternative assignment. The court agreed. So again, no different bucket of rights than what is created by Mahmud. So I think it's important that we kind of understand that as the legal landscape. Mahmud is what we need to look to. With respect to compelling students to. Say something they don't believe in, I don't believe that that's happening. To the extent that people object to. A person's lifestyle or whatever, we, I'm aware that the district has provided responses saying. If the child does not want to use an individual's preferred pronouns, they may refer to that person as. Teacher or by their last name or some other, uh, term. And that accommodation has been recognized in the Sixth Circuit. In a case out of Indiana, uh, where initially. It was a teacher who was refusing to use the preferred pronouns of students. The teacher was terminated. The teacher alleged this was a violation of his religious rights. The case was upheld on appeal because the, the idea was that. The accommodation of using the students' last names only was creating a divisive environment in the school that was creating. A hostile educational environment for kids. So even the Sixth Circuit out of Indiana, which is a much more conservative circuit than California. Um, upheld that termination. It revisited the case after the Groff versus DeJoy Supreme Court decision last year. That raised the burden employers must show for denying religious accommodations. So before Groff versus DeJoy, the standard was de minimis impact. That's all that they had to show in order to deny a religious accommodation request. After Groff versus DeJoy, which was a nine-zero decision, so it wasn't really a, an issue in dispute. The standard is now, it has to be a substantial burden on the finances of the district, or the finances rather of the employer. Um, some tangible. Uh, economic impact is, is really what the court suggested we need to start looking for. So the burden on denying religious accommodations is higher. That idea translated into Mahmud. Whereas before, the lower standard of denying religious accommodations. Was what governed even in the school district setting, but now we understand it is much higher. But that doesn't excuse the district from its requirement to undertake what Justice Alito said, they have to do a fact-specific or fact-intensive. Inquiry for each and every one of these situations come up. That's why these are going, these opt-out notices are kind of going out on a case-by-case or as arises basis. So if an issue comes up in the curriculum, whether it's in the pacing guide and it's a topic that's gonna come up in a couple of weeks. Or if it's an impromptu lesson that the teacher wants to do. It's my understanding that the teachers of this district have been told that they must provide notice. And an opportunity to opt out prior to that instruction occurring. So that's related to your point, Mr. Frazier, about instruction. You're a hundred percent right, this is a case about instruction. It's not a case about opting out of. Being around people with whom we may disagree. There are cases that are out there, there's a Boy Scouts case, it's relatively recent. That recognized the Boy Scouts, which is a private organization, had the ability. To not associate, there's a freedom of association, uh, right within the First Amendment. To not associate its organization with an individual who was a very prominent member of the LGBTQ community. This person. Was going on TV, was, was writing papers, was speaking at conferences, very public. And the court recognized that because of the public nature of this person's. Um, expression. By hiring this person into a very high-up spot within the Boy Scout organizations. It may be perceived that the Boy Scouts are adopting or embracing that person's message. Because he's such a prominent person. I don't think the analysis would have been the same if it was just a, a regular. Individual trying to join the organization without much of a public profile. But the court did say in that case, let me just pull up my note here. Um. The court said the freedom of expression, so, the freedom of expression association, the freedom to express yourself and associate. Like many freedoms, is not absolute. The right may be overridden for a compelling state interest unrelated to the suppression of ideas. That cannot be achieved through means significantly less restrictive of associational freedoms. In this particular case. Placentia or Belinda Unified, the compelling state interest is protecting employees from discrimination. So to the extent that there is an employee, and I don't know, because I don't ask. If there's an employee who has a gender identity different than that assigned at birth. That is their right, and the Supreme Court in Bostock v. Clayton County made it very clear. That Title Seven of the Civil Rights Act protects transgender individuals from employment discrimination. And that was, that was a Supreme Court decision written by Justice Gorsuch. This wasn't Justice Ginsburg or, you know, any of the.
Yeah, you can't discriminate based on employment.
So my point being, the district can't make decisions about an employee in any way. Based upon their sex or gender. So it, the perception of basically marginalizing somebody by moving kids out of their class. That could create an action, a cause of action against the school district, so we don't wanna do that. And so we also can't move somebody because they're transgender, because that would be taking action. Against the individual based on their sex.
Right, cannot move the teacher, totally get that, that's, and, and.
So this, what my, what I was gonna close with, it's a balance, we have to balance these two compelling state interests. And. These are both recent Supreme Court decisions that we are trying to balance.
Yeah, so the unique situation here was the previous year, the teacher was the opposite. And then they come to, no, I'm just saying, that, no, what'd you say?
I said, maybe, I don't have those facts, we don't have.
I'm, I'm sharing that with you.
I'd be, I'd caution you on that.
All right, okay, so in that scenario, let's just, let's play the game of, let's say it happened. If you don't wanna, hypotheticals, right? Um, and one year they were, uh, a man and the next year they were a woman, so it clearly was different. And the parents obviously saw that, the children very clearly could see that. In that case, I side with the parent deciding how they wanna parent their child. I understand legally, the district. May not be able to do something from a legal standpoint, this becomes now a moral issue. That unfortunately, what I think I'm hearing is the only option the parents have who truly want to. Uh, protect their children in scenarios like this is, they would need to leave the district. To stay out of this situation.
I don't think the current state of the law supports opting somebody out because of disagreement with how somebody presents themselves.
So you're saying.
I think it, from a, from a practical standpoint, I think it creates an extremely slippery slope. But there is not a legal basis currently in the law. To opt somebody out just because of disagreement with how somebody presents themselves.
Got it, so the legal response is the district. Cannot do anything, so if the parents want to continue to. Raise their children the way they wanna raise them, they have to leave, is basically what I'm hearing.
That's, like I said, there's currently nothing in the law that would require an opt-out.
And that's very sad, so.
Another hypothetical is this, is does the teacher, does a teacher have to teach? Under what their credential? So if I have a, if my, if my credential is under Leandra Blades. And then I decide. Next week that I don't wanna be called Leandra Blades anymore, so students are going to call me this. Can I do that if my, can I ask to be called a completely different name?
Um, women get regu, ma, married regularly and change their.
But if I don't get married, if I don't get married, I don't do any name change, I don't do anything.
California has a, a relatively straightforward and simple process for changing your name in court, so. Uh, I, I'm not aware of that being any sort of roadblock to somebody performing duties in the classroom.
So. If the district said to the, hypothetically, if a district was to say to a teacher. Hey, are you cool with an opt-out? If, if, if parents want to go put their kids in the library or go put their kids somewhere else. And the teacher says, that's fine, and it's not affecting his employment or her employment because they're. Still teaching in the classroom, but you have parents who believe that this is violating their religious beliefs, we can't accommodate them. And move them somewhere else for thirty minutes to do a study hall. We can't create another type of, of thing so these kids can opt out and they can go to study hall. And we don't lose a ton of kids.
I think it's fraught with peril to ask somebody if you're cool about something based on. A characteristic that's protected.
Okay, so the district doesn't go to him and say, hey, are you cool, just, because I mean, obviously. There's an uproar here, so it's, it's widely known something's going on, but the district can't just say, we're offering also study hall.
What would be the reason that they're offering study hall?
More, more choices. Kids just don't need to take computer labs anymore.
Need more choices.
Well, obviously, we need more choices.
Uh, a- again, I, I would not, it's not an approach I would recommend, simply because the employment discrimination issue. Being so fresh from the Supreme Court is a right that we have to balance against other rights.
So, so it stands right now that you can't opt your kid out of the class, but what they've been told is that they. Parents can go and pick up their child every single day during this time, remove them from the classroom and then return them after. So that's the only thing parents have to, are, are able to do, is to pull their kids out.
I don't know, I don't make policy for the district, so.
Well, is, is, is that doing anything dis, different if that's what the district has been telling the parents that that's their option? Pull your kid out and then put him back in?
It's the option that the district is giving them, I have. No further comment on that because it's what the district's doing, it's not my decision to decide.
So if the district said, yes, parents, you can opt out, we're gonna have a study hall, you do have, you don't have an opinion on that either, because of what the district's decision?
Again, if the district has elected to take the position that. There's no alternative available here because this is not a Mahmud opt-out situation, that's the decision of the district.
And then any ramifications from that decision would be on the district, correct?
Correct.
And then just another question too, um, so basically the hypotheticals we're discussing is more of something that's above us. And more of a Supreme Court issue to narrow down the definition and the applications of Mahmoud versus Taylor. And it's not up to us, it's just us, we follow what they give us as they give us, and it may change, it may. You know, adapt, but as of the moment, just like everything else, we are to follow what we're being told from the Supreme Court.
Yes, like we talked about at the beginning of August, the. The, the guidance in this case is not optimal. Um, and so what we have is what Mr. Frazier articulated from the handbook, which is. The clearest kind of statement that. We could recommend in terms of being consistent with what Mahmud stands for. Um, and unfortunately, you know, the dissent noted that, that this is a situation where. It doesn't provide any guidance to school districts, it doesn't help answer difficult questions. And so the only way that these issues are gonna be sorted out, unfortunately, is if they're litigated and ultimately reach the Supreme Court.
But it's nothing we do on our level, it's more of people would take it, the litigation.
You examine each situation as they come, I wouldn't ever say that you do nothing. And you assess the risk, you assess the requests within the confines of the Mahmud decision and.
But within the confines, we cannot go, like, make our own.
I wouldn't, it depends on the situation.
Definition of it or.
It's going to depend on the situation, but we have to look at it in the confines of Mahmud. And going beyond Mahmud. And going beyond Mahmoud, you would only be recommended if it was some sort of tangential or less than that, it'd need to be more direct, some sort of direct relationship with Mahmoud and perhaps something Justice Alito said in the majority decision.
And my assumption is that they left it pretty open and vague because there's not just one religion, there's thousands of religions. So to be able to specifically say X, Y, and Z to religion may be different for somebody, may be different for somebody in another country, another city, another religion, another church, whatever it may be. So I'm assuming that's why they left it so broad to, for people, like you said, to be able to come up, like if something, I may not think, I, I, something may not be against my religion, but it may be against something, somebody else's. So that's where the, if you come up with as a parent, something that you don't agree with, then you need to bring it to our attention because obviously, none of us are educated or schooled enough to know every single religion and what they believe. So that's where the parent part comes in of, like, if you and your specific religion find something in the curriculum, in a book, whatever it may be, that's against yours, now you may fill out the opt-out form and state your case, correct?
But this also says that we have the obligation to provide information prior to that information coming into the classroom.
Right, if we know about it, obviously, if it's
Which we should.
Well, if it's a well-known, well, if it's a well-known religion
No, 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 I'm talking, no, no, because it calls
You're talking about topics, content.
Yeah, the content of it, but it specifically calls out gender and sexuality where such instruction is determined by the parent. So it, we do have the obligation as a district to say those kinds of things. I would just like to say in, if we're closing, I don't know, I am going to encourage parents to advocate for their children, however you feel necessary to advocate for your children.
Mr. Robbins, thank you for the clarification. The sentences that were, were adjusted or modified brought me more clarity, and that was what I was requesting, so I appreciate that, and I think it's more clear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I believe last week, or last month, we talked about in the AR that teachers will give a two-week notice, is that correct? Okay, so I just want to be clear that all parents should be notified two weeks ahead of time to opt out. So I appreciate that.
Marilyn, can you also confirm too, because in the thing, it's saying that there's going to be an opt-out, but if the parents find it, see, this is the thing, if the parents find anything, if stuff comes home that is against your religion and, oh, you know, the curriculum's already being taught, like, how would that happen? How, how does that happen if it's specific?
Is there things in the AR to address that?
We, so I want to go back to Ms. Quintero's point about there are a multitude of religious beliefs. I think one of the, one of the challenges with the First Amendment is that when it was written, I think religion was probably a much more communal experience. You know, we didn't have the Church of England, we left England to get out of the Church of England, but we still had the Catholic Church, we still had the churches in New England that gathered regularly, and it was a smaller community, and it was more of a communal understanding of religion in the early founding era. We have grown as a nation, we have expanded our religions, it's become a much more personal religious experience. As I was going through Christian school, K through 12, you know, that was one of the things that was always emphasized, make it your own personal experience. So people are going to have different interpretations, they're going to have different perceptions of what is for and what is not consistent with their religious beliefs. I don't think the school district is in a position, I don't think any entity is in a position to try to guess of the 25,000 kids that walk through your door each day, what is going to be acceptable to this person or this person? It's just too big of a task. And so the best solution that we have is, what I understand that we've done already, is review the existing board-approved curriculum to find areas where Mahmoud may be applicable and gear up to issue notices there. The second step is to provide teachers with training that these types of issues are issues where you need to provide notice. We have to trust that that training was received, and we have to hope that it gets implemented. Otherwise, there may be consequences for those teachers, they have to understand that.
The accountability piece is the part that I think is important to, to make sure that if they don't follow the policies, then we do have problems.
And I'm going to say it right here from the dais, I don't recommend teachers be asking kids their pronouns. I understand we have an obligation to provide inclusive classrooms, but in terms of recommendations from a legal standpoint, I don't believe that's a good practice to do it before offering notice and an opportunity to opt out. If a teacher wants to do that activity, provide notice first, give parents an opportunity to opt out of that situation. They can be excused and find an alternative opportunity for maybe the five minutes that that conversation takes, and then come back in the classroom. But based on Mahmoud, I would not recommend having that conversation without notice and an opportunity to opt out. So
And I guess that was my, that's just my question, is, is if there's the proper training, because that is not part of our curriculum, is to ask for pronouns. And so that's what I'm saying, is this stuff creeps in, and it's not a part of our curriculum, it's not a part of our pacing guides, and so that's where
But it's consistent with state law, that we do create inclusive and welcoming classroom environments.
No, I think, I think her point is, is that part of the train, because I, I think that's, that's good advice.
Yeah.
And that should be noted, that that should be part of the training that goes into effect for this specific reason, for opt-outs, to say, hey, this is one of those things, whether it's on the controversial, controversial issues policy, that we have a list of several things, which you mentioned before, and then the Mahmoud decision, which is specifically about gender, sexual identity, all those kinds of things. These are the, these are the items that we need to make sure in this training that probably needs to be created if it isn't already created.
Well, remember, we were given much, really short notice on this.
No, I, I get it. I'm not saying, let's go, let's, why isn't this done yesterday?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I'm saying, we need to look at, at this, and we have a new superintendent sitting in the room, listening to all this, which is fantastic. And I'm sure she's just riveted. But I, I think it's important, and I think that is, that's really good feedback, to say that that, those kinds of things are the, the places where we should be cautious, and we should be transparent as much as possible in all these scenarios. And then when we have people go against, we have employees that go against what the rules are and what our, what our standards are, that there has to be consequences, there has to be, we have to keep people accountable. So, thank you, I appreciate that.
And just remember that we, we do need to meet with our friends in labor to discuss those, those policies.
Absolutely, no, 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 I, I get that, and there's a whole process. I'm just saying that from, from a legal standpoint, and from a decision standpoint, and a bylaw standpoint, and an AR standpoint, and a parent handbook standpoint, we, we got a lot of places we're pulling from here, so we need to condense that into a very easily-to-understand training and instruction for parents, because this is, this is a hot-button issue.
Yeah.
That if we don't figure out a way to make it stay calm, it could be an issue that we don't want to deal with in the future. And not just us, I'm saying, across the country.
Can I suggest, maybe we work on putting together like a frequently asked questions and to discuss this in particular, you know, stating, you know, that parents will receive information two weeks ahead of time? If this is a concern of yours, then you, you, maybe, say, maybe have a conversation with your, your teacher and say, you know, I, I'm going to be opting out of this, I'm going to be looking for those, you know, like, like, you know, basic things to not only give the parents information and, and just kind of help create a uniformed
Communication.
Communication, that we can address these issues and, and answer the questions. So we're not getting phone calls, and we're not getting emails, and
I can't promise that.
Well, I know. It, it's a fantasy of mine, okay? Let me live it for 30 seconds.
I think an FAQ is a good idea, like, we have an ever-evolving one that we have been working on with various groups and organizations. I think tailoring it to your particular school district and what your individual policies is something that could happen.
Because when, when parents come to me, I always say, go have a conversation with your teacher first.
Well, and parents have the right to review curriculum, they have the right to, you know, and Dr. Gray can explain those things a little further, I think that would be you. I know Dr. Young's not here tonight, so I don't want to impose too much on you, but what, you know, we, do we have opportunities for parents to come in? What do they need to do to, to review curriculum if? I know it's in the annual notices and stuff like that, but
Sorry about that, yeah. And we do have opportunities for parents to come in and review curriculum, and I think that it's on display usually, and they're notified, I don't know how soon in advance, but I think it's on display usually for 30 days for them to look over. But I had written down too, Marilyn, about FAQs, I think that's a really good idea, but I think we would want to ask what some of the FAQs are that you're already putting out there, get all the information, survey, because I've been getting emails too, and look at what the questions are that we may want to answer, and just be really explicit so that there are, you know, there's just less, this lack of clarity, I think, is causing a little bit of anxiety, and I think we do need to be more clear.
And in addition to that, you, you mentioned that the curriculum's on display, but that's for new curriculum, not all curriculum every year, which is why I, again, I want to reiterate, I think we've said it lots of times, but the pacing guides are extremely important so that parents can look through the syllabus and the pacing guides and know, okay, these are the things that I know is going to happen next year in this class or whatever, however they want to do that. So, I'm, again, pacing guides are important.
And I did see a lot of that when I went to Back to School Night, the two I went to, they all, each teacher that I saw, when I was in that portion of the presentation, they do have all the topics they're covering for that year, you know, what they're covering in history, science, all those things. So I know that they are giving out handouts, at least showing what they're covering.
Right, and, and remember that all curriculum is board-adopted. So everything that a teacher, that a family member, a parent would see if they went in to visit a classroom is already board-approved by a broad base of, of our education partners. As far as visiting the classroom, you could always do that, there's just a process whereby there's notification through the principal or assistant principal to, to do a formal visit. So again, all those things are, are, are recommended to make sure that you're comfortable with what's being taught and how it's being taught.
Yeah, and information like that should also be included in, in the FAQ. Okay, I think we're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries 5-0, and that was an aye from our student board member.
I'll make a motion to establish Board Policy 0440, District Technology Plan, first reading?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Frazier, a second by Mrs. Buck, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Velasco.
Um, thank you, good evening. Tonight, I'd like to ask Jeremy Powell, our Chief Technology Officer, to join me over here at the podium. I'm going to talk real briefly, actually, on Board Policy 0440, which is our technology plan, Board Policy 0441, which is our artificial intelligence, and Board Policy 4040, which is our employee use of technology. And then after we go through that, we can answer all the individual questions that you may have regarding each one of the board policies. So overall, on Board Policy 0440, the technology plan, that tasks the district to create and regularly update a technology plan. This plan addresses the current and future use of technology for the district, which aligns with the vision and goals established by the PylUSD Advantage. This policy calls out student achievement, health, well, well-being, access, accessibility, professional development, digital citizenship, cyber literacy, and preventing and responding to cyber attacks as specific areas of focus. Moving on, a Board Policy 0441, Artificial Intelligence. This policy would establish that the district is supportive of the use of AI, provided that it is people-centered, ethical, transparent, accountable, responsible, accessible, secure, and private. Furthermore, utilizing AI should engage the community, provide professional development, and be evaluated regularly for improvement. Our last board policy regarding technology is the employee use of our technology, and this policy describes the expected, allowed, and permitted uses of technology, including artificial intelligence. So even though we went through all three of these, now we're going to address each one as we go through for your approval. So Board Policy 0440, do we have any questions?
I think this is a long time coming. I think this is an important one.
Okay, good.
Any questions? Any changes?
I, I just wanted to mention that North Orange County ROP, we have a board meeting tomorrow, and we're doing the same.
Oh, good.
I just like how it really defined our plan and that, and who is going to be a part of developing it, and, and that it is, you know, not just staff, but our community is involved in it, et cetera. So I, I really like this one.
So we just vote on this first one, then?
Okay.
Do we want to waive the second reading?
No, let's bring it back, let's stick with what we should do.
Yeah, that's our policy. Okay.
Is it going to change?
Some of the references to other policies could change, so I would recommend the second reading.
Okay, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0 with an aye from our student board member.
I'll make a motion to establish Board, Board Policy 0441, Artificial Intelligence, first reading?
Second.
I have a big question about this one.
Okay.
You, sorry.
Just a second. We had a motion by Mr. Frazier.
Oh, sorry.
And a second by Mrs. Buck, and, and any comments about this one?
No, nothing to say. Yeah, hold on. So you said, uh, recognize, uh, some of
The artificial intelligence.
Yeah, so there was something that you read, Joan, saying, like, all the stipulations of the AI. Is that something we can even promise? Like, I, I, you read all those things, and I thought, I don't know if that's possible.
So I, I think it's written as those are principles, right? To guide us in its use.
Okay.
And, you know, AI is being slowly embedded into just about everything.
Everything.
Right? And, and the principles are, are where to start.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think that the key is that we continue to evaluate use and adjust. And I think that's a generic thing that needs to be done with everything, especially technology at the rate of change, you know.
Are we going to be doing brain scans? Because your brain's supposed to shrink by 20 to 40% if you use AI.
Here it is.
That's why preschool is so important, because the 80% of your brain is built before age five.
Well, see, Carrie, we're going to scan our brains in 20 years.
And this is going to be another ever-evolving
Yes.
policy as well, as it changes.
Yeah, and I just, I just wanted to emphasize, you know, the part about health and well-being, especially, I mean, there's some very prominent court cases right now where parents are suing AI and, and these companies. So I think that should just really be on the forefront as we review AI and look at it, just to make sure that we are being safe and responsible
And protecting kids.
And protecting our students.
The digital citizenship part that we put in everything else.
Yeah.
I would like to share that Student Services has already begun with the professional development piece, and not Student Services, Ed Services has already begun, professional development piece, and it's been very well-received by teachers.
So there But we're also going to do that for students, correct?
Yeah, I heard positives about that training as well.
There was, there was a question that was asked to me, and the parents were wanting to know if, um, let me pull up the question. It was, um, they wanted to know if privacy is going to be maintained during IEP meetings by prohibiting the district's use of AI software for note-taking. Things like that have been popping up.
I'd have to get back to you on that, I would have to work with
I don't know enough about AI, that's why I'm just asking the question.
And, and that's, I mean, that's kind of the direction that I'm going, because like, there's things that we have in our pocket that can be recording and transcribing and all of the time. And I know that there, there's several people, like even when I'm on a Zoom meeting and somebody has to say yes because recording's begun, like, we all are used to it, but there's some real, I mean, if they're transcribing this, and then it's going up into whoever's cloud, there's a lot of things to, that's why I read all these and I say, how are we going to watch that, and how are we going to stay accountable? That's a lot.
That's really about the terms of service of what you use and paying attention to
The platform that we use?
And where it's being stored.
And us doing our due diligence.
It's why you see the big players in the game, Microsoft and Google, adjusting their terms of service for those who pay, to be very specific that that data is not used to train and it, and is retained within your organization.
Yeah, so could I use the the Chat G P T Pro, which does not use, or the team, it does not use to train, which that's one step, but do we really trust them? I don't know.
So in in my organization, we have a rule around not doing the 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 note taking because of the that specific data in there related to names and HIPAA.
Because of the content you're conversing about?
Because of what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Um, so I just, and we're looking at our, you know, our policy is to try to figure that out to protect individuals. So it's incredibly important, that one, I think is that. I didn't actually think about much before that, but the, until it was the meetings about specific things we don't want to share.
And that's, these are all really good points and we need to examine this further. I'm looking out there at our new director of special ed because there is a law that says that if a parent wants to record the meeting, that they can do so. Yes, they can do so, but they have to let us know twenty-four hours in advance. And then we also have the option to record. So we can't prohibit that from happening. But this is a little bit different, what you're asking. It is people who maybe don't.
It's the AI note taking.
It is, it is. But that's happening where we have advocates coming in and they are using the, it's called Otter something or whatever.
Otter AI, there's Plot AI, there's a whole bunch of them, and they're fantastic, but.
But it's very important that there's notice and all of that. So we're going to have to, you know, all these things are just on time things, right?
And educate the parents. So if they're going on to these meetings and if they are having like bringing up things that they don't want to share, we need to warn them ahead of time that these note taking kind of things potentially, I mean, they're recorded, so just.
Right.
To protect them.
Yeah, the implications of privacy are most critical for school districts and all organizations for that matter. But remember, AI, it it's well beyond just that because your academic honesty policy, your discipline policy, deep fakes, all the variety of different ways that AI is being used, you have no idea if it's real or not.
Tell me about the deep fakes.
Yeah, so the deep fakes are, yeah.
I'm teasing.
Yeah, no, I know you. I'm glad you are. But that, again, is among the things you're hearing most about, but it's really layered. And and again, I applaud Jeremy and Joan and the team to really take a deep look at all this work, but it's constantly evolving.
It also ties back to cybersecurity as well. And I know it's not specific to this, but we've talked about it in the past about the protecting the information that we have, regularly deleting information. We have staff members and I sign up my kids for health insurance through the plan and that kind of thing, and I have to embed all that information in. But if we don't delete it, it's just sitting there waiting for a cyber attack. And so I want to protect all of the the staff, the. So just another note to bring that back.
Thank you.
But great job.
Yeah, I don't envy your job at all. Okay, I think we're ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries five to zero with an aye from our s- our student board member. Yeah, that's how we've been doing it.
I'll make a motion to establish board policy four zero four zero, employee use of technology, first reading?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Frazier, a second by Mrs. Buck. You thought you could walk away?
I just want to say thank you for doing that because this, I know it was long overdue to be updated, so. Yeah, that was another one.
Just, it was, that's good. Just start over. That's a lot.
Now, I think it's clear for our employees and and especially the part, you know, where they have to use their district ID and not to use their personal ID on district property and and keep that clear and separate.
That's another one that's evolving too, that things are on the cloud. You can access them from any device. So that's the one that really had to be revamped and changed.
Yeah, so, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks, Jeremy.
And aye from our student board member.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I think we need to take a break.
Oh, darn it.
Oh.
Oh, dear. Okay, all right. Should, should we?
Yeah, we have, we have the presentation of the audit edit actuals.
Let's, let's do this one.
Okay, we'll do this one.
I'll make a motion to approve the employment contract for Dr. Kim. I don't have your full name in front of me. LeBlancas Barza. As superintendent of schools.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Frazier, a second by Mrs. Buck. And I need to read out the terms of the contract. The superintendent providing a term from October sixth, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine. And the superintendent's salary shall be three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, paid in twelve months payments. And the superintendent shall receive a five hundred dollar per month car allowance, travel-related expenses reimbursement for up to six thousand dollars for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year for purpose of onboarding and transition. And during the term of this contract, the assistant superintendent the superintendent shall be entitled to such health and other fringe benefits provided to all certificated employees of the district. So is there any questions? Nope. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that is an aye from our student board member, motion carry. And so now we will take a break. We'll come back in fifteen minutes. Okay, we're going to resume at eight fifty-three. And we're moving on to eighteen point three. You got a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-five dash zero nine, week of the school administrator.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Quintero, a second by Mrs. Buck, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Mendoza.
Thank you very much. It is such a pleasure to read resolution twenty-five oh nine, week of the school administrator. Whereas leadership matters for California public education system and the more than six million student it serves. Whereas school administrators are passionate lifelong learners who believe in the value of quality public education. And whereas the title school administrator is a broad term used to define many education leadership posts, superintendents, assistant superintendents, especially those principals, assistant principals, special education, adult education leaders, curriculum and assessment leaders, school business officials, classified educational leaders, and other school district employees are considered administrators. And whereas providing quality service for student success is paramount for the profession. And whereas research shows that great schools are led by great principals and great districts are led by great superintendents, these site leaders are supported by extensive administrative networks throughout the state. And whereas the state of California has declared the second full week of October as the week of the school administrator. Whereas that week is October twelfth through eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, as week of the school administrator. Be it therefore resolved by the Placencia Yorba Linda Unified School District that all school leaders should be commended for their many outstanding contributions, service, and dedication to the advancement of student achievement.
Any questions or comments?
I just think that this is like the most oomph that we get in like these resolutions. I think she should read every, every resolution.
I'm happy to do it.
Okay.
As it comes at the beginning of the agenda.
Londa, you can't leave.
We didn't vote yet. We didn't vote yet.
See you there.
I don't think there's anything more to say. This has been a great meeting with you, Londa. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero with an aye from our student board member.
Okay, Joan, you have to have that type of energy.
Okay, we got to make our motion first.
Well, I'm just, I'm just warning her, forewarning.
I'll make a motion. We approve the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five fund balance and un-audited actuals as reflected in the SAC's financial report.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Buck and a second by Mrs. Blades, and we're going to, Ms. Blade. Blades. Yes. And we'll turn the time over to Mrs. Velasco to address and give us our presentation.
I'm very happy to be here tonight to present the un-audited actuals, which is closing up the school year for twenty-four, twenty-five. I'd also like to reach out to our fiscal services team and thank them for all of their hard work. There's a lot that goes into closing these district books and it takes a long time and they did an excellent job. So moving through this, what is the un-audited actuals report? Uh, it's a twenty-four, twenty-five unrestricted and restricted general fund and components of ending fund balance. We also are going to talk about all of the other funds too. And they're going to talk a little bit about how that affects our twenty-five, twenty-six multi-year projections. And then the last item here is our challenges ahead and our next steps. So in California school districts, un-audited actuals are the annual financial reports that show the complete financial picture of the district for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year before they're formally audited. That's why we call them un-audited. These reports are submitted to the California Department of Education for review. And our un-audited actuals provide the foundation for the data for the twenty-four, twenty-five audit, which we'll be bringing back to you at a future board meeting. So let's get into this. So the, looking here, this is the unrestricted accounts. So keep in mind that the unrestricted accounts are the ones that we have the most control over and it's the largest amount of our budget in the general fund. Looking at the column here that's green, that was our estimated actuals before we closed the year's books. Then we closed the books and now we have our un-audited actuals, which is the blue column. And then the purple column, that's our change from what we were estimating to what finalized. And you can see here overall for revenues, we actually ended up with an additional four point two million dollars. And I actually gave you the different reasons and the different breakdowns for what this was. Some of our income went up, such as additional lottery money, additional interest income we received, miscellaneous revenues that come in from our school sites, and some money goes down. So we actually decreased by two point seven million dollars the contribution to our restricted programs. And then we look overall here at our expenditures. And so you can see each of these line items. And overall, those really held very true. It was only off by four hundred thousand dollars. But within each of those line items, some of them go up, some of them go down. We had some changes for our workers' compensation. IBNR is incurred but not received, so it's like a liability count that we have to put on the books. Overall, you know, pretty decent here where we're really within target of where we were at. Looking at the gray line there, so we estimated ending a negative deficit of ten point two million. We actually ended because of that increased revenue at a deficit of six point four. So overall, that was an increase to the deficit, so less deficit. Once we add those to our beginning balance of seventy-two, seventy-two point nine million dollars, we're ending up with a ending balance of sixty-six point five million dollars. Okay, now we're going to move on to our restricted accounts. So keeping in mind, restricted money is a little bit different. We're giving very specific reasons of what we're going to spend this money on. And this can take multiple years. We can receive the revenue over multiple years. We can make the expenditures over multiple years. So you might see this is like a different kind of swing, bigger than the unrestricted. But overall, in our revenue account, when we get to the purple column here, you can see that the revenues went up by five, five point nine million dollars. And I also gave you the reasons for why this all happened. Some of our increases were increases for our ELOT money, a million dollars for our Children and Youth Behavioral Health Initiative, that's our new grant. And then I went ahead and listed all the rest of these things. A decrease was a million dollar decrease for our Title One, Two, Three revenues because that revenue will then be deferred over to twenty-five, twenty-six. Federal revenues are a little bit different when we get into these deferrals. We cannot show the revenue until we make the expenditure. So because we had less expenditures for our federal programs, we have to drop our revenue. And then we'll increase the revenue again in twenty-five, twenty-six when those expenses hit. Overall, on the expenses, you can see that the reduction was four point eight million dollars of expenditures. And again, some increases and some decreases. And you can take a look at what those are. The biggest one I see here is two point nine million for some services. And then our decreases, we did not spend some money that had been allocated for the eight point seven million dollars for books and supplies. Keeping in mind, we're going to re-budget all of this in the twenty-five, twenty-six year. So overall, I don't know why that didn't pop up here. Oops. Well, I'll show you the ending balance on the next thing that I get to. So moving on to the general fund components of ending fund balance, let's take a look now at where are we ending up with our unrestricted balances? So we had talked about sixty-six point five million for unrestricted, which is the green column. And then we allocate that money for certain things. We have point four million or four hundred thousand in our revolving cash in our stores, which are our inventory that we hold here. We allocate one point two million for our site and department carryover. That will get rebudgeted in the twenty-five, twenty-six year. We're holding five million for our textbook adoptions that are coming up soon. We have ten million set aside for our declining enrollment costs, eight point nine million for our deficit mitigation. And we're keeping a contingency reserve of five percent, which is twenty point five million. And lastly, we have our reserve for economic uncertainties of five percent, which is twenty point five million. And you can see that totals that ending fund balance. For the restricted balance, it's fifty-three million, which it didn't show up right on that prior screen there. But with that fifty-three million, it's all restricted. So we're just going to keep that and use it up in twenty-five, twenty-six. Combining that, we're ending up with a total ending fund balance of one hundred nineteen point five million dollars. So now let's talk about the other district funds. Oops. I'm trying to get back to ten. This thing's tricky here. Oh, I don't know why it won't go to ten. Okay, it's late and I pushed the button too fast. So our, I'm trying to give you a, an idea here of where our restricted programs truly are. So I listed these all for you. You can go through and take a look at these. But overall, just for instance, we have our ELOT program, which has an ending balance of seven hundred thousand. Again, that money's going to get moved into twenty-five, twenty-six and spent. And then you can go through all of these. Overall, ending up with that fifty-three million dollars. So I just thought this would be good for you because I know that you're interested in each of these programs. So other district funds. So how are we looking with everything else that we have in this district? We have our ASB account, our Fund Eight, and that's ending up with two point three million. Our special ed pass-through, basically, we just put the revenues in there and then we take the revenues back out. So that's why there's hardly any balance left in that one. Our child development Fund Twelve, we're ending up with four point five million. Our nutrition services program, when you look at the end here, we have nineteen point five million. Our deferred maintenance account, we're ending up with two point seven million. Our capital facilities, fourteen point five million. Our county schools program, Fund Thirty-five, is basically there's nothing left in that fund. Capital outlay Fund Forty has seventeen point three million in it. This is the first time and probably, and the only time that you'll see Fund Fifty-One with actual dollar amounts in it. This is what we receive from our county treasurer's office. This is what we use to pay our bond monies. And so we have an ending balance in here of twenty-four point eight million. And then lastly, our self-insurance fund, which pays for all of our insurances for the district, ending with sixteen point nine million. So very healthy ending balances in our restricted programs. So we're doing good. So how does this all affect as we start to move forward? So on here, we have our twenty-four, twenty-five un-audited. So, on here, we have our 2425 unaudited actuels, which is our green column. We just went through all of these numbers, overall, ending this in 66.5 million. These are our unrestricted monies and so we wanna keep a close look at this. Our 2526 adopted budget, you can see here in red, we're still having the budget of a deficit of 15.6 million. But we have, because we have that higher ending balance from 2425, we're anticipating a $50 million balance at the end of 2526. Unfortunately, when you look at the purple column, which is for the 2627 projections, with that 13 million deficit, if we don't do any changes, that's gonna bring our ending fund balance down to 37.9 million. I'm sorry, that thing clicked. Okay, hold on one second. This thing doesn't wanna work for me today. Jeremy, it's going fast, do you wanna just move it for me if I tell you? Yeah, I don't know why it won't work for me, I'm on the unrestricted one, there we go. Good? Okay, so on the unrestricted, what I was saying was, we were luckily that we have an increase for the ending balance brought over to 2526. But because we have that 15.6 million deficit, we're anticipating 50 million at the end of this year. Continuing with the projection of 13 million deficit for 2627, we're gonna end up with 37.9 million. And continuing with the projection for 2728, that's 11.9 million deficit, we're gonna end up with 26 million in unrestricted. This is something that we have to address, which will be coming back with our budget cuts in the near future for you. And then going on to the next slide, oh, I should've hit that one. Now, let's just talk about our restricted. You saw how nice we ended up this past school year with the 53 million. And then, when the revenues come in and the expenditures come out, our 2526, we're estimating 25.9 million. The following year projection, bringing it down to 18.7, and the 2728, bringing it down to 15 million. This is good, we wanna spend our restricted money on our kids when we have the money. And so, there's no problem with this ending fund balance going down, we like that. On slide, next one. Okay, so overall, now when you add them all together, you can see all the numbers here. So, overall, our ending balances, again, for 2425, the green column, it's at 119 million. The 2526, we're ending at 76.8. The 2627, 56.6 million, and lastly, the 2728 year, 41 million. I did add a reserve percentage in here, this is a mandated calculation that basically takes the unrestricted ending fund balance and you have to divide that by all of the expenditures, the unrestricted and the restricted, which seems a little bit different, like why would we do that? But the reason that we have to do that is because truly, the unrestricted ending balance is the total control of the districts. Those restricted balances, we can't count. And so, overall, I just wanted you to see our reserve percentage in that final year going down to 6.7 if we don't do any kind of budget stabilization. Okay, so our challenges ahead, thank you Jeremy. Our enrollment continues to fall, I heard a little bit tonight, we were talking about that. We still have federal funding concerns. Our costs for our step-in column every year, our pensions, our Calpers and Calsters, our health and welfare benefits, all continue to rise. We're also facing inflationary cost pressures, pressures for other items such as our supplies that we pay for, the services, the equipment. The costs just keep going up. And so, we have to keep an eye on that and budget appropriately. So, our next steps, just bringing it all in, I want you to see, here's all the future reports that will be coming back to you for the 2526 year. And this is in alignment with developing the LCAP, because our budget follows our LCAP. And so, here's all of the dates for you to take a review. The only one that I really wanna talk about is in December, we'll be bringing back the 2425 audit for you to take a look at. Our auditors will be here to present. And then we'll be bringing back the first interim report for 2526, the current year. And lastly, the budget stabilization plan, so we can start to discuss how are we going to make our budget appropriate to get us through our future. And that is our presentation, so I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, this was, I like the simplicity of this presentation to see it, the percentages are important, obviously. Yeah, we have a problem, but I think that, I'm looking forward to seeing the budget stabilization plan moving forward. And I'm excited for Dr. Kim to get involved in some of this too, because this is right in her wheelhouse, so. Yeah, spend the money on the kids, but let's make sure we can continue for a long time to come.
Thank you again for your hard work and I know you always have a way of explaining things that everybody understands, so I appreciate that. And yeah, thank you, I know it's a lot to do, so appreciate it, to the whole team.
Thank you so much and to everybody for all their hard work on putting this together. And I think December's gonna be very busy and we're gonna have to make some hard choices, but for tonight, here we are.
I also think it's encouraging and we're not out of the woods. But also, when we look at these and we see the gains that we actually made compared to what we anticipated, those kind of things, usually throughout the year, we're able to massage some things or some things don't work out or move different places. So, always something to remember to keep in mind that there is some other variables that we can't necessarily always track that we get to see in these kind of scenarios and then the audit will reveal more, but, so that's, I just wanna say that.
And also the numbers with the health initiative with the billing, that was huge, so appreciate that work too.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? And that was, motion carried five to zero with an aye from our student board member. So, now we are moving to curriculum and instruction.
I'll make a motion to approve the textbook and instructional materials resolution number two-five-dash-zero-seven for the 2526 school year.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion by Mr. Frazier, a second by Mrs. Blades. And we had our public hearing and we didn't hear anything. Were you ready to vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh with an aye from our student board member.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the revised Arts, Music and Instructional Materials Block Grant Plan for the 2526 school year.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Buck, a second by Mrs. Blades. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Leon and Mr. Young to give us more information.
Good evening, President Anderson, members of the board, Dr. Mustarino, executive cabinet, and welcome to Dr. LeBlanc Esparza, happy to have you here. I'm looking forward to working with you and alongside you. So, it's our pleasure to present to you this evening our proposed plan for the fiscal, sorry, for the final year of the Arts, Music and Instructional Materials Block Grant. You will recall that on June 30th, 2022, Governor Newsom approved Assembly Bill 181. This bill established the Arts, Music and Instructional Materials Discretionary Block Grant Funds, which are available for spending through this school year. Based on feedback provided by our educational partners at the initial development of this block grant plan, you will recall that there were three major categories that we devoted this funding for. Enhancement of visual and performing art programs, expansion of early childhood education programs, and an increase in access to activities and athletic programs. There was also a miscellaneous action line to allow for responsiveness to emergent instructional material needs that fell within the allowable uses of this block grant. The original plan was board-approved in September of 2023 for our allocation of roughly 13.8 million. After the board adoption, our allocation was increased to roughly 14.1 million. The increased funds were placed into the miscellaneous line item to allow for continued flexibility and responsiveness to emergent instructional materials and program needs such as OCSCS's Innovation Labs, STEAM workshops at Lakeview Elementary School, C-STEM math at our high schools, as well as the implementation of international backglowier programs at Morris Elementary and Kramer Middle Schools, just to name a few examples. Before you is the overall breakdown of what was actually expended the past two years as well as what is budgeted for this year by category for each year. As you can see, our plan calls for approximately 50% of the funds to go towards visual and performing arts, nearly 20% towards athletics and activities, 15% towards miscellaneous instructional materials, curriculum and service needs, nearly 13% towards early childhood education, and roughly 3% towards indirect costs. A more detailed breakdown of each line item's actual costs versus budgeted costs were provided to you in the most recent board update. In order to determine how best to budget the remaining balance for this year, our visual and performing art coordinator engaged in a process of soliciting feedback from our VAPA teachers and site administrators by administering multiple surveys and engaging in in-person discussions.
All right, the results of this survey feedback from elementary principals and VAPA teachers can be found right there on the screen. And as you can see, the four options provided were focused on one-time expenditures. There are three priorities that emerged as high or medium priority, with 21 affirmative responses asking to provide additional VAPA curriculum, instruction, instructional materials and supplies, with 20 affirmative responses asking to update and maintain VAPA facilities and equipment, and with 18 affirmative responses asking to provide funding for events, performances, festivals, field trips and exhibitions. The results of the survey feedback from secondary principals and VAPA teachers can be found on the screen. As you can see, there are two priorities that emerged as high or medium priority, with 38 affirmative responses asking to provide additional VAPA curriculum, instructional materials and supplies, and with 40 affirmative responses asking to update and maintain VAPA facilities and equipment. Additional feedback was asked on the next slide of the survey. I'm gonna go there. Sorry, wasn't sure who's controlling. Additional feedback was asked of the survey participants in an open-ended format. The responses were themed into five categories. Elementary STEAM initiatives, which involves converting computer labs into STEAM labs with flexible furniture and Sphero's robots. Visual arts needs identify more funding for consumables and supplies, display racks and portable easels. Updating performing arts facilities at all levels, however, you will see this is not included in the final year's plan due to the constraints of capital outlay projects and construction. Increased music equipment and storage, as well as continued technology upgrades, which was already allocated and will be expended this year, thank you Jeremy. And finally, arts and cultural enrichment, which involves a desire to form outside partnerships, field trips and community arts events.
We plan to carry on the actions from the previously approved plan, but with adjusted allocations to align with historical spending. Substantial changes in allocation to existing actions include a significant increase to the allocation for early childhood education to support the increased cost of the TK instructional assistant positions, which will greatly help the general fund as the UPK add-on is not sufficient to cover the cost of meeting the 10-to-1 ratio. Middle school athletics was changed to ELOP funding to ensure an ongoing funding source for this invaluable enrichment program. The extra high school coaching stipend was discontinued due to an inability to sustain these positions ongoing. An increase in allocation for the KILNS project at the high schools due to the unexpected costs associated with these projects and delays in the project completion date. And we have added the following new actions for the remaining funds in order to honor the feedback from our practitioners and site leaders. Site discretionary funding for elementary, middle and alternative education schools who did not previously receive discretionary funds. Site visual arts discretionary funding for high schools to ensure additional visual art materials and supplies are purchased in collaboration with the high school visual art teachers. The conversion and enhancement of 17 elementary computer labs into STEAM labs. And transportation for district festivals and events. Included in your materials is a more detailed plan for the final year of the Arts, Music and Instructional Materials Block Grant. We welcome your feedback and questions at this time as we seek your adoption of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate the fact that all of our schools get some discretionary funds that they can use this last year to really boost what they need. So, I thank you very much. I'm glad that that was conveyed and it was actually put into the plan.
And thank you also for getting the feedback directly from the schools and principals and the VAPA department just to see exactly what they needed, so that was great.
I'm going to say something shocking and it's gonna be about the sports, but the coach, you know, the coaches and the booster clubs were really upset about the stipends that were taken away from the coaches. And I know you said that sometimes it's hard to fill those positions, but I don't really believe that it's hard to fill those positions. It may just be somebody new, you know, that, you know, it's not like a coach in some of these positions that are, you know, are gonna be there for four, five years, but they always still do need, you know, they always still will fill the position of the coach. And I know that the boosters felt like they got blindsided when the stipend was taken away and then now they're scrambling to, you know, to find the money to pay for an additional coach or have to, you know, go without it. So, I don't know if we can establish a set criteria so our athletic teams know how many coaches every single year, you know, instead of just right for the season, all of a sudden, there's no money for this, so.
Yeah, that was the one thing that I was gonna say that I'm concerned about is if we're reducing stipends, that's going to ultimately end up coming out of parents' pockets because they're funded through booster clubs for the additional cost of whatever that's going to be. And especially if they're just finding out now that they're not going to be getting the funding they were anticipating in their budget. I already know that there are programs that are already under budget and are going to have a problem to get through the season. I would like to see us make sure that we support the athletic programs a little more heavily with finances in some way. I was, when we did this, I was very excited about it because I think coaches are one of the most underpaid positions on school campus and potentially some of the most impactful humans on students as coaches. So, I think that's a very important thing to make sure that we have quality people and we have enough people and we can maintain, or we can retain the talent there. So, that, it might feel like, ah, it's not a big deal. I think that's a big concern, to make sure that we have, we have the funding available so that we have good coaches to, just like we have great teachers, we need to continue to have good coaches for these students and athletic programs and that are funded by parents and booster clubs. I mean, I don't know how many funding-raising events I've been to already since the summer started and then we've got a ton through the end of the year. And I know we're gonna be, there's gonna be a call at the end to say, hey, we need more money. And now this is probably gonna impact that as well. So, if we can do something in this, if Yolanda was here, I would look at her. But if we can do something to find a way to support that would be great.
I feel like, I feel like we play a lot of bingo as parents to support all this. It's fun, it's a good time, but, you know, I just felt, I know a lot of the, a lot of people are reaching out. They're just really disappointed that a stipend was taken away, they weren't expecting it. And I was a booster president and, you know, it is hard to keep asking the parents for more money, you know, and to fund these programs, so.
Thank you, so I've noted, taken notes of the feedback and we will work on this and see what we can do. And as a parent of two children who play sports in this district.
And you must play a lot of bingo too.
How many years have we been?
How many years have we been paying for the extra stipend? Has it just been one year or two years?
One year.
Just one year?
It was like two or three.
No, just one year.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, sorry, twenty-four, twenty-five.
So two.
This would have been.
So we've, we paid two. Two of the three years. I just wanted to say I'm really excited about the STEAM labs that are coming in to our elementary schools. I'm very excited about that. And I'm also just gonna point out that the sites are getting discretionary funds for activities and athletics and things like that. So depending on the school site.
For the principal, yes.
For the principal.
So the principal probably isn't gonna pay a stipend.
So, but it's, it's supposed to be for activities and athletics of VAPAS and alternate ed, so.
So every, every year at the high school level, HR actually allocates stipends for head coaches and assistant coaches. So the additional assistant coach funds that came out of the first two years of the block grant was like gravy on top of what they already get. So that we didn't take away their base head coach and assistant coach.
Totally, totally get that, however, when it's already being paid, that these coaches are being paid for at a booster funds. The additional coaches. So that was a big relief to families of, of athletes.
I understand. Yeah, I definitely understand that.
So saying it's great, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, calling it gravy, it, we, we are, the fundraising, Liz knows, like, it's insane.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Yeah, but I think you're saying it was, it was like a perk. It was never meant to be permanent.
They had never had this additional position granted before by any grant. So this, this first two years of the grant, they, they received that additional.
And I would like to see it continued.
And it was never meant to be permanent, correct?
Right, because it was temporary funds.
Right.
But would like to see it continued. Heard, got it.
Budget stabilization too.
Yeah, put that in there.
Yeah, so, so typically stipends are, are in a collective bargaining agreement as well and the number of stipends, stipends that are provided as well. One-time dollars, yeah, kind of a slippery slope, but you had the money, so you take advantage of it. But if this is a commitment of the Board of Education to continue to fund these positions, because coaches are not only for athletic events, also VAPA has probably more coaches for the bands and orchestras and so on. So that's an important commitment to make. And when we get to the budget stabilization plan and start identifying priorities, that sounds like that will be among them.
Okay, any other questions? I just wanna thank Ms. Velasco for giving me that information and getting that out to everybody. I asked for like how much we had spent in previous years in the columns. And breaking it down from the itemized budget. So we got, we should all be receiving that soon. So thank you. It's coming. It's coming to everybody. I asked for it today and they said we're gonna get it all soon. So let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries five to oh with a, an aye from our student board member. Okay, we are to the consent calendar. Actions proposed for the consent calendar or items are consistent with approved practices of the district and our dean routine in nature. The trustees receive board agenda backup information in advance of scheduled meetings and are prepared to vote with the knowledge on the block item vote. Are there any items to be polled? Okay, let the record show that no items are being polled. Three meetings in a row. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Blaze, a second by Mr. Fraser. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to oh with an aye from our student board member. Okay, so now we are to board reports. And Mrs. Blaze, yep.
Okay, just a few things. I'm gonna try to be short. And I know nobody ever believes me when I say that. I'm gonna try. So I actually think this is something that me and Mrs. Buck agree on and probably can work together with. I mean, that's shocking. We're at like sixty-five percent agreement tonight. So we've had some parents reach out about independent PE curriculum, what the criteria is, and it sounds like it's at a district level that you can change the criteria from what I was reading today, that you don't necessarily have to be an Olympic athlete to be involved in independent PE. And so I think we should look as a board at changing the criteria for independent PE just simply because we're losing students. We've lost four hundred students and then parents and students are getting upset if they have, you know, outside sports, outside, you know, we have a lot of barrel racers. We have a lot of things like that that happens. And it's actually very competitive, a very physical sport, and they wanna be able to, you know, do that in place of the independent PE. And for some reason, it seems like we're really restricting things. And I think what we should be doing is putting the students first as to what their needs are and be more flexible with them, just because I think education is changing and if we don't change with it, then we're, people are just gonna, you know, pick up and leave. So if we can look at the independent PE, if I have, you know, some support from the board, I think we should be tailoring and making sure that we're working for what's best for our students and what's best for their lifestyle. So, and so another thing that was brought to my attention is people are saying that there's been some changes at Parkview. And I told them that I would address this. And so if you, if maybe we can get some feedback from, I, I said, please explain to me what the changes are. So we're aware as a board. They say that the parents, it used to be simple. The parents and students would be assigned to supervise a turn-in teacher. A master agreement would be signed, curriculum would be provided along with lesson plans, but the expectation was never to work solely from the provided curriculum as expected. State standards will be met, but homeschooling enabled parents to have the flexibility to go on field trips, do hands-on activities and so on. At minimum, parents and students were required to meet with a turn-in teacher one time per month to submit work samples. Once a month, turn-ins enable the flexibility homeschool families long for. Says this year it's changed. And they said the changes have been largely impacting the middle and high school students. Where there was once a turn-in teacher this year, they have a content area teacher for each of his classes. His areas looks more like a traditional school. And each content area teacher gives the option for students to either work out of the textbook or Apex. Each content teacher has a Google Classroom with assignments due weekly, twice, monthly or monthly. And they're still expecting me with a turn-in teacher once a month to collect the work samples, but instead of flexibility, they're now having to log into the Google Classrooms of each content area teacher, submit their assignments by due dates, mostly weekly, catch up on Apex, and they said gone are the days of just being able to meet the state standards in a way that best meets the needs of their child. So they feel like they've lost the homeschooling flexibility and it's gone to a more rigorous, you know, more of like a traditional school schedule. And so they were asking why this, why this was happening. And so I'm just kinda reading their email because I wanna make sure I got it right. And so I was just wondering if they're, what the reason is for, if there's a way to come back to it, you know? How do we, they feel like they're, they feel like a lot of these accommodations have been made because a lot of the students coming in are attending USI and they may need a more structured approach. So they're kind of asking, can there be a two-tiered system of like somebody wants more traditional homeschool than then somebody who needs more help with curriculum? I mean, you know, we do have a brilliant team, so I'm sure it can be done. But so that was kind of the question. That's what they, that's what they were asking us. And so I wasn't sure if the board was aware that these changes had occurred. So.
Yeah, I could address that.
Okay.
Yeah, I have heard from the entire board practically on it. So we are in the process under Dr. Gray's purview of looking at exactly what is happening there. My understanding is that the lines have been blurred between the independent study and the homeschool. And as we have looked closer into it, we're not meeting either one of those requirements. So we are in the process and I, hopefully by October, perhaps, Dr. Gray, we may be able to provide the board with an update. Put you on the spot there. Alright, and I'll be with you in spirit. Okay?
Okay, well, I'm glad because that's been a hot topic. The Eldorado High School, I know that we don't have a principal there, but they were also, a lot of people were complaining about, did we ever figure out if the civics class, there was, we weren't gonna fill spots? I don't think we're filling lost in spot and there was some, some curriculum that wasn't being, the kids weren't being able to take because we weren't filling teacher spots? Is, is that, was that ever addressed?
No. Yeah, so the, yeah, the, the narrative was that we had not replaced teachers who had left, but those were all overstaffed positions. So it is staffed. And now as we approach the contractual obligation of making sure we level by the third week, we hopefully will be able to add, if we need to add, or move teachers from one school perhaps to another where there's lower enrollment, but that, that's a process. But every, students are getting the classes they asked for, but the class sizes are really very large. They're thirty-eight for the most part. Particularly in, you're talking about civics and government in particular, yeah.
Yeah, so they are being offered the classroom.
They are being, yeah, they are, and they're continuing to work on balancing. Eldorado's enrollment was up, up a bit, maybe a hundred. I'm not sure. Does that sound right? They're more or less eighty, eighty? Yeah, it was up a bit. So now you make all the adjustments accordingly, but they're really big class sizes. But of course, our contractual obligation, our agreement is thirty-eight to one. So, yeah, they're at where they, yeah, they're right where they're expected to be.
Okay. And then another email. A parent from Eldorado said that they were questioning how to get their daughter a hardcover book because some things have gone digital. And they said, my kid just doesn't, you know, doesn't do well with the digital. So are we able to provide the hardcover books? And I absolutely agree because I cannot read off my iPad at all. I have to have a hardcover book. So I said I would ask the question tonight, how, how do we do this? How do we accommodate the students who don't do well digitally or on like, you know, a device?
Right. So I just saw that email myself today. So we do have hard copies of books and, and particularly for whatever modification needs to be made for a student. So the question of why that student is unable to get that, I'm still investigating, but I'm gonna be there. I'm the principal there, by the way, on Thursday, so I will check it out when I'm there.
Well, if you need help trying to find the books, I'm available.
Yeah, okay, I'll call.
I find lots of things around, around my house that nobody else can seem to find. Okay, and somebody asked a question. I think it was John Quackebush. I don't know if, you're still here? Alright, so USI, you wanted an update on USI. We got the update that last year we were enrolled at eighty and this year we're enrolled at a hundred and thirty-three. So our enrollment has shot up. So that's the news from USI. And I was also curious too, it was also asked what funds are, I, I know that we're sending a trainer to, I think it was Valades in Valencia in the mornings for USI. Someone asked what funds are being used to, and if that's going to start, if that's going to go district-wide or if it's only gonna be those two schools. What funds are being used to send trainers that way? So it's the same, it's USI funds, but this is the same concept that USI is open before school to the non-USI things, but we're just simply sending him to the school sites.
Thank you for doing that.
Perfect.
That's exactly what we need to do.
Perfect. And then so another question was, if it's at Valades in Valencia and it's just a closer location for before school, are other kids able to go and attend at that school site? Or is it simply open for the Valades in Valencia? So if like we have kids who maybe attend Eldorado, but that's close to them, are they able to go before school to that site? Okay, thank you. Okay, and so that was, I just had a lot of questions tonight. I don't have a lot to report. I, I did go to the Dana Hills Espranza game. Yeah, we won't talk about it. We will not talk about that. But watching, you know, again, watching a lot of sports and I'm, I'm really excited for the theater stuff to start coming around this year. It seems like my schedule's a little more open this year, so I could, you know, be attending things. And yeah, I'm just really excited too for our new superintendent, Dr. Kim. I think she will do fabulous things for our school district and I really loved everything that she had to say and all the innovative opportunities that are gonna come and opportunities for students. And I'm just glad that we have continued, you know, a couple of years ago, we started really looking for the student first and I just look forward to you continuing this and, and really looking out for our students. So, and that is all I have.
Alright, so I also wanna say thank you to the team. I know all the emails I have directed towards everyone have been answered, so I really appreciate that as well. Like I said, sometimes when I don't have the answer, I like to forward those along. So thank you for doing that and answering the parents as they communicate through emails. I went to the first Eldorado football game and it was great. It was nice to see a way game having so many attendees as usual. I know Eldorado does really well at that, so that was great to see. And seeing everybody kinda kick off the season right before school started. So that was great. I did attend the TOPAS back-to-school night. And that was great to see so many parents there. The community involvement has really increased. And as we all know, as parent involvement increases, test scores go up, you know, kids do better, we're more invested in their progress. So I can't wait to see how much further along. I know they've really increased their scores so far, but I can't wait to see how much further along they can go with implementing the parent involvement piece and the community going. And also as they earn their PBIS award as well. So can't wait to see that. It was great to see the teachers being engaging, really interacting with the parents and, like I said earlier, giving the information that the parents needed as they start the school year. So like I said, it was very nice to see that. Luckily, we were able to have last Thursday off and I was able to go to Golden's back-to-school night after all. Glad I could squeeze that in. And that was great to see too, all the parent involvement there. I've heard a lot of good things about Golden. And it was great, great to see them in, in kind of a, you know, teacher action mode. I can't wait to see both schools back hopefully during the day for a school visit. But yeah, Golden had their book fair going on. I was, went to almost every grade. TOPAS, I went to practically every classroom. It was great. It was a whirlwind, but it was fun. Golden, we went to every grade level and really got to see, like I said, the teachers in action, presentations. They had all the, you know, standards up, what they're gonna be covering, expectations, PBIS incentives, all those things being communicated to parents, which is really, really important that we all know the expectations for the year. And like I said, I had a great time, very welcoming communities, both of them, and I can't wait to go back. So thank you.
Alright, well, I'd like to reiterate, rea, rea, wow, I'd like to be able to speak. I'd like to reiterate a few things that were said tonight. One, I'd like to reiterate the coaches stipends thing. I think that's important. I won't say it again. I just wanna say that's, that's an important thing. The communication to parents about the opt-out needs to be clear. And I think the FAQs is gonna be a big deal. I think we need to make sure we, we do a really good job of communicating that. And I've said this for the last three years, communication needs to be better. And I think we can do better. We just need to make sure we're very clear, especially on something like this. Needs to be very clear. And then lastly, I will speak about Parkview as well. I actually have two students at Parkview. I had one that already graduated from Parkview. Carrie, you can speak to experience at Parkview as well. It's the hid, I've said this before, it's the hidden gem in our district. It really is. It allows students and parents that want to have a hybrid experience where they want the home, the advantages of homeschool and they want to be able to immerse themselves at whatever level they feel appropriate for their student in traditional school. The things that have changed have made it extremely confusing as a parent and for the students. The, the communication is not clear. The, the way that things were handled as far as getting your, your class assigned to you, I mean, it was I think two weeks into the semester before my son was given his Apex access and then it was wrong Apex access. And it's just administratively, I think there's a mess. So the thing that I really wanna make sure that I stress is that we don't wanna change the format of view is. I'm good with saying let's improve processes, let's give support to the teachers that are there, but it is a I'm good with saying, let's improve processes, let's give support to the teachers that are there, but it is a homeschool-first environment. And I think that we need to be able to have these kind of options for students that learn best in this kind of environment. And, and parents that choose to put their, their students in a Parkview that have been there the entire time, it's very obviously different. Um, and it goes away from, I think, the essence of what Parkview is. So, um, I wanna advocate to say, hey, let's put the brakes on this change and communicate what's going on way better. Um, and I think that ultimately, I know, cause I've talked to staff at Parkview, I've talked to, and I'm, I'm a parent of a student at Parkview, and I've heard from other parents at Parkview, and there's just a, a lot of uneasiness about how things have changed because it's changed the essence, not just some operational procedures or some people to communicate with, it's changed the essence of the school. Um, and I think that, that's something that I wanna make sure we try and preserve as much as possible. While again, I, I think they need support, and there's, there's things that can be better. Um, but I think the, the blending of USI with Parkview is good, and it's important, especially from the NCAA standpoint, because we, we need our, our student athletes to be able to qualify in those, uh, in, in NCAA, uh, coursework, which is only available at Parkview if you're not at one of the traditional high schools. Um, but also, I don't want USI to dictate what needs to happen at Parkview. So that's, that's kinda my, my big takeaway from what I've experienced as a parent with students there, and then speaking to other, uh, the other teachers there, is it, it, it feels like there, there's a clash of, of, of what the purpose of that school is, and I wanna make sure that we, we preserve that as much as possible, so. And I love Parkview, and it's phenomenal. Um, and I think that it's, like I've said before, Carrie's have kids in it, I've had kids in it. It's just such a great opportunity, and it's unique to our district, and I think that's one of the things that, um, is, is really important to continue, so.
You're close. Uh, my kids didn't go to Parkview, they went to La Entraada.
Oh, La Entraada.
Which is now Buena Vista.
Yeah.
An independent study, which was really important for her. I did not want to be the homeschool teacher. So, that needed to, yeah, and we talked a little bit about this last year of making sure that those two schools, although they're, um, the leadership is the same, making sure that they still remain their schools, and it seems like there's a lot of confusion, so. I appreciate the eyes on that and to help clarify. Um, independent PE, I'll just say I had a daughter that did cheerleading in middle school, and I had to, um, advocate for her somewhat because she was doing like two hours a day, five days a week, and meeting all of the hourly requirements, but she wasn't like at an Olympian level, so they looked at what does the language look like to make that equivalent, and I know that review was done, it was a weird mic, um, years ago. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, so I, I, I've had a little struggle with that too, and just making sure that, I mean, my daughter was super driven, and, and to have her take additional PE on the ten or twelve hours she was already doing, it, it just didn't make sense. She needed the time to do the homework. Um, and so that's how we used, used that time. So just a thought, she wasn't, you know, she was really doing the homework while she was not working out. Um, I was at summer graduation, which happened like the day before the, all the teachers came back and we did our symposium and all of that, so it was literally like a day. Um, but it was great to see a handful of our students that successfully completed over the summer, and we still created that opportunity for them to have that graduation ceremony with their family, so thank you. Um, I attended the management symposium before the start of school, and the Trust and Inspire Leadership Presentation that we got was wonderful. Um, I am looking forward to getting the, a copy of the book. I know that we were potentially gonna have those soon. Um, it was inspiring for me, and I took that back to work and talked about it with my staff, and how, how the trust and inspire is so much better than control and command, if you get to that point, and you have to put in a lot of framework to get there. Um, but I'm glad that we had that presentation, and that I'm hoping that we'll be able to continue to build off of that, um, going forward. Um, Eldorado, I attended Eldorado on the first day of school, and I was lucky enough to be able to watch all of the students come out onto the field, and they made the shape of twenty twenty-five with all the different classes. And what was the best part about it is a shout-out to, um, the, uh, Activities Director, to Erin. Um, he, eh, he has the whole vision of what it looks like for the whole school year. So, all the students are, the sophomore, junior, seniors are all, all out on the field, and the freshmen come in later when everybody's set, and the teachers are all standing out there, and they do like the bridge like you do in, you know, kids' soccer games and stuff, um, to lead them into the field. So, their first experience is coming out under the bridge of all the teachers, and all the kids in the back cheering them on. And then the last experience of their high school is, um, at graduation, when they graduate and then they leave the field, the teachers all do that same, that same arch. So it was just kind of fun experience to be able to, to see that. Uh, I attended my, um, my first visit of school year, um, at Teteffree Middle School this week, and got to walk around and see all the happenings at the beginning of the cla-, of the school day. I was shocked how many students that they have in band. Um, Principal Sarah Barton told me that forty percent of their kids are in band. Um, it is amazing. Um, and that just builds in Eldorado, and we talk about in a music and arts pathway. Um, they've already got it established, so I am looking forward to seeing where that's gonna grow. They need some more space. Eldorado's band is also just busting at the seams, so, um, something that we need to consider. Um, lastly, or two, two more things. I'm getting, um, to go do a Golden Bell verification for another school district in Orange County. Um, so I'll report back on how that goes, um, and that's a, a CSBA nomination. Um, you, you submit ideas and things that you've done in your school district that you're very proud of. And, um, some of those are selected, and then there are board members from CSBA that go out and verify that that's actually happening. So I will, um, come back and report how it was and tell you all about it when I, um, when I do that. And then the very last thing is Narcan. I just want to, um, agree with what was said before. We need to get that out and train. It's a very short period of ti-, very short training that can be done online, and it saves lives. So, period. So let's do that.
I think too, um, the one that I went, when we were first administering the Narcan, we went like, I think it was twenty twenty-two. It was literally like a two-minute video. So if we can make that two-minute video even just accessible, like just sending it out in an email, and they can watch it, and somehow we can verify they watched or they signed something, it could be, it could be so easy.
Um, I also attended the Leadership Symposium, and it was really a, a fun day celebrating, um, years of service, a milestone for our administrators, welcoming new members of the leadership team, and doing service for, um, our students and helping them get their backpacks together, and the training was amazing on, um, Trust and Inspire. And I'm excited to attend the follow-up training in October, and I actually just ordered the book on Amazon, I couldn't wait. And it sits next to my bed, so, we're, we're working on it. And, um, and then for fun, I'd just like to point out that we learned that several of our employees have some very hidden talents, and, um, some of them are comedians, and I had no idea. And so now all of us leaders know that. Um, I also was able to attend, um, our new teacher orientation breakfast, and it was really, uh, fun to be there, to support our new teachers as they start their career at PYL, and that they were, you know, provided information um, to be successful not only in our district, but in their lives, and, and, um, it was just really a well-rounded training and orientation. I had, um, a great first day of school. Um, I got to walk, uh, my grandsons to their first day of school and, um, be there on the side and, um, see all the excitement and, um, the nervousness of my grandsons going to school, to a new school, and just the welcoming excitement that was there on campus, and the opportunities to, her photos, and to, um, being greeted by the principal. You know, she was out there working so hard, and, um, and then, you know, standing in line with my little first grader, and he was so nervous about meeting friends, and how he was just going up to kids, and it's like, would you like to be my friend? And, you know, new school, new experience, and it was, it was just really, um, good to see that interaction and to see, um, meet some parents as we stood in line with our first graders. And then after that experience, I went to Melrose Elementary, and, um, toured several classrooms. At school, like, all the teacher, all, all the parents had disappeared, all the kids were in class. And I think the overall theme I saw in these classes as teachers were getting to know their students, and students were getting to know their teachers in their classroom, was just that there was just such peace. I was just, you know, I thought there'd be like more nerves and, you know, maybe a little bit more crying, but there was just such peacefulness in these classrooms as these kids were engaging and working on. And I'm like, we're off to a great start, and I was very excited about that. And, um, I look forward to, you know, continuing to go visit our, our, our classes and our schools, and to see all the great work that's taking place. And, um, I just wanted to s-, um, publicly thank Dr. Musarino for stepping in to lead our district as we search for a new superintendent, and he took us on, and I just appreciate his kind, thoughtful approach and for being part of PYL. So, thank you, Alan, for all your hard work, and, um, and Dr. Young is not here tonight, but I would like to thank her for her thirteen years of service here in our district, and wish her all the best in her new position and with her family, and, um, for being a, for sacrificing and for being part of our district. So, wish you well. So, that ends my report. I think you guys covered all the other details, so good job.
Second.
Oh, wait, 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 wait.
Wait, wait, wait.
Tonight, we adjourn in memory of Bruce Topping for his thirty-nine years of service. Bruce dedicated himself to teaching instrumental music to students in the PYL USD District, um, including Valencia, Kramer, Travis Ranch, Brookhaven, and more. He profoundly impacted thousands of musicians, and his orchestra consistently reached a level that rallied collegiate and professional ensembles, and he will greatly be missed.
If I could add, he taught my daughter. Um, she was at Kramer, and then went to Valencia, and was in that band, it was in that orchestra, and still plays vi-, uh, viola today. Um, so, I, I think of him, the back of him up there, um, orchestrating the whole group, so. I'll make a motion to adjourn in his memory.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Buck, a second by Mrs. Blades, and all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero with an aye from our student board member, and we adjourn at nine fifty-nine.